I'd like to call the order of the October 13th meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please go wrong? Mayor Edwards, here. Council members, Klein?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Judkins?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Michael and Annie?
Here.
Thank you. Very good. If you would all rise and join us in the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know of no changes to the agenda, so I accept the motion for its approval. Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Approve the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for the citizen to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And while Pete checks for online citizens, I'll remind everyone of our principles. Clive supports the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Pete, do we have anyone online?
If you'd like to participate online, you can use the raise hand emoji on your Zoom screen. At the bottom, you'll see a number of icons. If you go ahead and press reactions, the window will pop up where you can then press raise hand. Your honor, I don't see his hands going up.
We have one here in the chamber to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. If you'd come forward to identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Robert Greenway. I'm from now Granger, 1901 Locust Street.
And what brings you here tonight?
Okay, as you know from a previous meeting, I am a Democratic candidate for the county supervisor of your area. And I gotta be careful here in an O H A perform. Am I trying to this? But the incumbent, who now is your new county supervisor, on more than a few occasions, and I pass it off, that he said he doesn't represent the cities, he represents the rural. This has been going on for some time, and it came surfaced again today. Do you all, as a council, expect some representation from your county supervisors? I got one nod, two nods.
We do, and I'd say we have an excellent one in the chambers tonight that gives us great representation often, but so yes.
Okay, that's what I feel. If you're elected and you're voting, you deserve some representation. Okay. The other is actually something of newsworthy. Some of you all don't pay attention to the county. They are now doing a major renovation. They are doing a major demolition or proposed. This actually is proposed not to even have to have to have a bond because of the excess cash flow to local office sales tax, increased tax revenue on bonds. What is the limit? And I'm just curious, that you have to go, is there a limit that you have to vote for if you're gonna spend so much money?
It depends on the type of project.
If the money is sitting there, they don't have to, the county supervisors do not have to do anything. Is that correct? They can spend it?
I don't know if we're in the position to answer that question.
Okay, that's fine. And understand, Mr. McCoy, I don't know the answer either. This just came up. You follow me? And some of the questions I get asked, if I don't know, I research. I appreciate your time. Once again, I hope I did not press the point. I get a nod of that. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else in the chamber that would like to address the council on items that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move to consent items.
Move to resolution.
Second.
The motion is second on the resolution for the consent items. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And if you're remote and are having trouble voting, if you could just orally tell us what your vote is.
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. So that passes by a vote of five to zero. Next on the agenda would be our presentations, and we have first one from Jeff.
Mayor, council, good evening. I'm very happy to be here tonight to introduce to you some of our new employees and fill out our staff here. First up, I'll actually give you two presentations. But first up, we have our new civil engineer, Jonathan Sagan. Jonathan comes to us with city experience, previously with the city of Urbendale, along with a history of working on consulting side too. So he comes to us with great experience and looking forward to having them come aboard. He's an Iowa State graduate and also a fellow City of Ames student. So I worked for this as a student of the City of Ames, just like I did. So co-opted there and very happy to have him aboard. Look forward to working with him. We have a lot of work lined up for him and looking forward to getting him started. So with that, I'll introduce Jonathan.
Jonathan, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have any opening remarks?
I'm just excited to be here. Always enjoyed running on the green belt, resident of West Point right now. Been there for the last seven years or so and glad to be aboard.
We can fix that.
The one thing they don't have to fix is you're an Iowa State grad. Well done there.
No problem there. Yep.
We're glad you're here.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Additionally, we were able to fill our last operations specialist position. Tonight, we have Kevin, if you want to come up, Kevin Olgin. Kevin comes to us with previous city experience. Also has worked and has a CDL B, so we can get him started, started snow plowing right away here.
Don't talk about that.
I'm gonna scare it away, okay? It's gonna come before we know whether we like it or not. But he's got some truck operating experience. Graduated here in the metro area. So with that, I'd like to introduce you, Kevin Olgin.
Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you for having me.
Do you have any, anything you'd like to say to the council?
I appreciate the opportunity. Ready to go to work. Put my Class B experience to work and not looking forward to the snow, but it's hot, right?
Job just, it's job security.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to introduce Supervisor Robert Brownell. Bob, it's good to see you.
Thanks. County Supervisor Night, I guess. Clive, Robert Brownell, Polk County Supervisor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Glad to be here with you. We have a check around here someplace. Yes, here it is. I don't know if you have a bank in Clive, big enough, with big enough night depositary to deposit this. But this is a check to the foundation, which and we have these for photo op. See, so we'll do a photo op later. But we wanted to assist the city in the Clive rebuild, the landing project that you're doing right now. Very exciting project, and we had a nice event in Waukees here earlier this week and learned a lot more about it. So that's just been great. And but we're happy to help, and the check is $400,000 from Polk County. Didn't have to bond for that either, by the way. To answer that question, by the way, it's 1.5 million for counties, not just this county, any county, has 1.5 million. You can, you can do a bond issue without having to have a referendum. And I don't know if the gentleman is from Polk County or Dallas County. I couldn't quite figure out what was going on there. But anyway, we're not tearing anything down or demolishing anything and building anything back. So not too sure where that's coming from, but I digress. Anyway, so congratulations on the project. And John, if you'd like to come out for a picture of the council.
I think we'll get the council down there and get Bob and several people.
Supervisor, even Weaver has to come down, but he's part of it.
Let's go ahead and put you on right here, and I'll take the shot.
I think the city already has the real check, so never fear.
Community fee.
Not lost in the mail. Yeah, been deposited already, so I don't worry about that. Matt and John wanted to give a short county update, which I will do. Right now, probably the biggest thing I'm working on right now is the new Food Bank of Iowa rules and regulations that have been floated out to demarc pantries that require them to behave in a little different way, including the Clive pantry. And there's some concern about what this would do to the pantries long term in that basically what they're asking the pantries, the D mark pantries to do is to make all inventory available to anyone that comes in anytime, all the time. With the ethic being, I think, that they want to feed more people more often, which is a good ethic. The problem is that what they put out requires more food for more people, but the same amount in inventory. So basically, pantries like the one here in Clive have to commit to basically violating the law of physics to be part of Food Bank pantry network. So if you don't sign up the addendum, then you're terminated. And there was 11 pantries out of the 14 pantries that D mark operates. 11 did not sign up, including Clive, and so they're no longer a Food Bank pantry with no ability to, as far as we know, appears, no ability to reinstate, get reinstated underneath circumstances whatsoever. I know the director over there pretty well, both professionally and personally, and she's a smart woman, and I like her a lot. So I can't help but believe there's been something lost in translation here because I don't, this doesn't seem right to me that this is gonna go like it is. What the concern is on the part of the Clive pantry and other pantries that didn't sign up was that if anybody can come in anytime, right now they're restricted to one visit per month within the pantry network and because it's just a finite amount of food, basically. And but anytime food, like food rescue is available anytime anybody when they come in. But the three days of the food that you get from the pantry, that's all they get. So this would, this would abrogate those, those requirements, and the concern is that they run out of food by mid-month, and nobody gets fed. So that seems to be the kind of the theme that most pantries are looking at, which is too bad. I know that's not what they want to do. They want to feed people. That's what they're in business for. Urbendale pantry was one that did sign up. I think it's fair to say that they're watching it very carefully. They're very concerned that this is gonna run them out of food. They're serving about 1,700 families right now. They're concerned that'll, that number will go to 2,000 or more, and if it does, then they'll have to take a look at the agreement again themselves. So we'll see what happens. But we're working on that, and hopefully we can get this resolved and that folks can get reinstated if that's what it takes. And there's a middle ground here somewhere. John Norris, the county administrator, and I have a meeting with Michelle Book, the CEO, down there on the 24th. And so we'll see where it goes. Another thing I'm working on with our illustrious fire chief here, Mr. Rowe. Chief Rowe is, we have a smart 911 conversion over to rapid SOS. Smart 911 was the initial kind of entry into having information plugged into the 911 network. So when you called, then you had the information plugged in, then the dispatcher could see if there's a person with medical issues in the house. It was a good system. The problem was, out of the 650,000 people living in the metro, there's only 600 that were using it. So the one that we have now that we're transitioning into is one used by the rest of the state of Iowa, and so that'll be good. What Rick is gonna do is kind of be the go-between between various organizations and the Fire Chief Association and the EMS Association to maybe help with training, for one thing. And the other thing is that if I tell you that this thing's coming up and hey, you know, you need to tell everybody you can to get enrolled in this, it's just a point and click kind of thing on their website. You'll tell one person, probably not because you don't care, but because you know that many people probably that are interested in this. But we think the Alzheimer's Association, the ALS Association, Diabetes Association, Aging Resources and others have a lot of clients that would be interested in this. Many of them are elderly, and so we're confident and hopeful that Aging Resources will help them get enrolled. Because these dispatchers aren't doctors, they're not RNs. They, you know, the EMS and the police, and they walk into a situation, they don't know any more than the dispatcher does. The more the dispatcher knows, the more the police know, the more the EMS knows. I think that'll be a positive for everybody. So I'd recommend take a look at that, but we'll encourage all folks to get to do that. But I think we get some of these organizations that work with people that have medical conditions, that they can get their client base to get enrolled, and that should help a lot. And finally, I guess, on a personal note, this is probably the last time I'll be in front of this body and on a person, on a professional level. I'll be getting a new district, and on January 1st, the previous gentleman will not be your supervisor. I confidently say, I think Mr. McCoy will be your supervisor. And so I'll be in Urbendale, Johnston, Grimes, basically everything I have now except Clive. So when I picked up on Durant and Mitchellville, so I've got a district, a size of a congressional district practically. Going across the North End, but I hate to lose Clive. People are kind of remarking me, it's been surprising that I've been on the Board of Supervisors for 22 years. But it's only the people of Clive that have been affected with me for most 37 years of my political career. I was elected in a special election in March of 1985. There was, I actually tried out to get appointed to Clive City Council and didn't win. The Clive City Council had their minds made up before I walked in and who they wanted to appoint. That never happens, I know. But, but there was a referendum three months later, and somebody told me that, you know, if you have a bond referendum, that you can challenge the incumbent at that time, which I did. And ran against a very good guy, the name of Juris Cosson and, and the incumbent, which are a guy named Ernie McFarland, great, two very nice gentlemen. Won that election and haven't lost one since. So I've been proud to be part of Clive's infrastructure, I guess, and team ever since. Was mayor in 93 through 2000. I got elected to the Board of Supervisors, hired a lot of good people, including Rick, and worked with some tremendous mayors, including you, John, Scott Sercina, Les Alcime. Gene Maddox was mayor when I got elected. When I got sworn in, there was, we were in a little metal building over where the current Harbach Center is. And that was bond issues to build New City Hall, actually. And there was a mob outside, not because I was getting sworn in or anything, but there was a mob outside because they were upset about the building and construction of the truck stop over at Hickman and I-35. And it has been probably not the greatest site for it, but I voted against it because I'm a politician, I guess. I saw this coming. And so, but Gene, the Gene Maddox's idea, I think, was actually pretty visionary, which was, he wanted, he was for it because he wanted to get the utilities extended beyond I-35 under the freeway, and that was the way to do it and have somebody else pay for it. So that got us started on our development, West 35, and it's been great. Had some, done some great things here in Clive, and I'll miss y'all. I've been part of the team, worked with some great council people, including all the people here and, and managers, you know, when I was elected to that, Kerry Lego was the manager. And then I hired Dan Olson as manager, great guy. And then going down the left, we brought Gary back as interim manager. And then, and then hired Dennis Henderson, who has been here for a long time, and then obviously Matt. So you've had a string of really good managers here, I think, and really good council people. And one thing I tell it, students when they come and talk to us, and I really believe this, we have a, this isn't the only metro area with a lot of suburbs. There's a lot of, there are a lot of metros like this across the United States, and but not all of them work like this one does, like this metro does. We have a host of city councils and mayors right now that really have for a long time and currently look out, look out for the greater good. What's the best thing for the metro? Of course, you're gonna look out for Clive, and you can look out for citizens, obviously. But also, there's an eye on what's for the greater good in the long term, and that's not 100% true of everybody, obviously. But there's always a council member or two out there floating around as a problem. But the vast majority are really there for the right reasons and really there to look out for what's best for the metro. And that's why this metro works so well, I think. And we got 640,000 people living in this metro, growing. There's so many, many good things about the metro. There's all good things come with the city that size. There's a couple of bad things come with it too, but you know, we'll get, we'll get through it. And, but it's been a pleasure to serve you, and I won't forget you and hope you won't forget me. My name's on a ball field up west, so if you drive by, you won't, you won't forget me. So you'd be surprised the number of people that tell me, you know, you need more Clive outside there, Bob. And I'm like, you know, I don't own that, right? But anyway, I'll continue to be supportive of Clive, and if I got anything for you through Matt, let me know, and Matt McCoy, and Matt McCoy in both. And let me know, and I'll be happy to help anyway I can.
We appreciate that, Bob. You're welcome here anytime. Any comments, questions for Bob?
I think it's, thanks for your service.
Pretty poignant that you could tell us some of those stories, but to also bring a $100,000 check on your last meeting with us. Thank you so much.
That's my biggest check I ever brought to this place, I think. Good way to go out, right? Thanks so much. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Next item up on the agenda is our CIT proposal. Mike?
Oh, CIT. I thought you said CIP. I thought I missed something on the agenda. Okay, I am at the right place, so. Mayor, council, I'm here before you tonight with an exciting proposal. If you remember during strategic planning, the council voiced interest in expanding our abilities in mental health response, crisis intervention. And at that time, I said that we were watching the Waukees model, and we were very interested in it, but that I thought we needed to take a wait-and-see approach at that time. The model was being rolled out, and they were hitting the bigger areas first to try to help more people. One of the larger areas was not able to start the program when they needed to because of the number of officers that they're down, and they can't really start a new program. They want to focus on the basics until they can get their staffing up. So I was approached about stepping up in the line, and we've, we've had some talks. I put a description of the program in your packet. And tonight, Darcy Alt from Dallas County, she is the Director of Community Services and is supervising the crisis intervention team program with, with the grants that come along with it. And Melinda Austin from Zion Behavioral Health are gonna talk to you a little bit about that program tonight. So I will turn it over to, I think, Darcy, or do you want to send Melinda? It looks like it's Darcy, so, okay.
Okay, well, I didn't bring a $100,000 check, but I hope that.
It's in the mail.
I think our program brings a lot of value, so hopefully that helps. In that packet is a PowerPoint that, we won't go through the whole thing, but it kind of details, some of the finer details. And then actually, in the left side is our pamphlets about the heart of Iowa region. Dallas County is actually the part, a part of a three-county region. Back in 2014, the state regionalized mental health. And so we were a county-run system up until that point, and then the state stepped in and said, we want everybody to have all the services, so we're gonna have you regionalize. You see some really large regions, and then you see some smaller regions. We're only three counties, but we have a pretty large population, thanks to Dallas County. Our, we're probably middle of the road for region size. There's 14 regions in the state of Iowa, and for population size, we're probably around seventh in where we stand. So what we're talking about are these crisis intervention teams, which actually we're calling co-responder teams. Waukees started out, and Melinda actually has overseen that a little bit. Are you all familiar with what a co-responder team is? So it's a dedicated mental health officer, and we call them dedicated because the officer is hired to do the job of a mental health officer. There are teams out there that they call designated because they would pick a different officer each day to go out and handle those mental health calls, but that's not how we're running our program. So in each department, we're working to make sure that everybody is CIT trained, and then we're hiring into the dedicated mental health officer position. They are working a 40-hour shift each week alongside a social worker, and they're taking those mental health calls, much like a mobile crisis team. But originally, the reason why we started out doing this and we decided this was the route we were going to go is mobile crisis teams are extremely valuable. We've had them in Dallas County since 2009, and we really appreciate their value, but they have an hour to respond. And we were finding that while that's okay, it's not the best. And we still use them in the off-hours, but if we can get to those calls much quicker, and we can respond a lot faster and help those officers out, then that's what we want to do. So I'm gonna let Melinda talk a little bit about how this has been working in Waukees, and then I can fill you in on how the rotation's gonna go through our departments. Okay?
I just brought some numbers to share with you guys. We went live in Waukees on July 1st, and these numbers are through the end of September. We had, we were in service for about 49 days, and within those 49 days, we had a total of 56 calls for service. Of those 56 calls, we were able to de-escalate and leave in the community 51 of those folks. So we've only had to actually commit one, one person and divert the rest of them into appropriate services. So we're able to kind of get our, our foot in the door with these, with these community members and just really kind of keep them in their own environment, keep them and get them referred on to the services that are appropriate for their level of care. Doesn't mean that we don't ever have to take them to the hospital, but we have definitely diverted many, many people from having to take time in ERs and the jails. I guess I, I don't know what, this is still information you guys, this always kind of goes best with questions. So I guess I'm not sure what questions you guys have about the program, but that kind of is always the easiest way to tackle.
Yes, I have a question. So when you say you've taken these calls, are these redirected 911 calls? How do they get to yours? Are there a specific number?
So we are directly dispatched from 911. So a person will call us 911 in need of assistance, and we are directly dispatched to, we are first on scene.
So is the 911 operator then trained to know when to send them to you?
So there's about, there's six specific calls that are preset to automatically trip us out. So there's a list of specific calls that we will get. One that we kind of have a little bit of discretion over is welfare checks. So depending based on like what the, the base of that call is, if it's just an elderly check, we wouldn't go to that. If it's a potential mental health call, then we would, we would go to that and just self-assigned to it.
Michael?
Kind of an ignorant question on this was, you're saying that it was county-based, it goes to the state-based. Now you're kind of a regional three-county model, right? And start, obviously, Clive carries over Polk County and Dallas County. I see the literature of the three counties. Your service would carry over from Dallas to Polk County?
Yes, so one of the cool things that happens, and I'm not sure where it's, let me see where it's at. Another reason why I don't follow PowerPoints is I'm a people person. I'm a social worker. I don't like technology. I can talk to people all day long, but I, I don't want to do that.
More technology.
All right, let me find it, because last year, we went to, all right, so I can put it. Okay, so here it talks about our funding. So prior to FY '21, we were fully funded through county taxpayer dollars. So we had our own specific mental health levy, and we were only at, oh, I broke it. Okay, oh, it wasn't me, it was you. Okay, fantastic. So we were fun, we were funded through county tax dollars. We had our own mental health levy, and in, in 2017, legislators capped it. And what that did to us in Dallas County, because of our growth, it, it was terrible for us because we were capped at 2584. And what that did to us in Dallas County, because of our growth, it, it was terrible for us because we were capped at 2584. And we had so much growth that it really did, it kind of damaged our budget. We were still growing and creating programs, but we were not, our fund balance was not growing.
Legislators often do that if they see too much good, they will calm it down.
Listen, it's an issue. So anyway, um, in 21, we, and the state decided that they were going to go ahead and start funding the regions to create equality. So that was pretty cool for us. And it was great timing for this project because then they lowered our levy, the, the county levies, the regional levies to 21, and they backfilled 15 per capita with state dollars. And then as you can see from this, this year they came in at 38 per capita, all state funding. And then we're going to see an increase next year and the year after that. So what that kind of does for us is to say, you know, we've got state dollars. A, we're able to create additional programs, which is totally cool for us because we're able to do this co-responder model. We kind of trade services in kind with Polk County. So they have some crisis services, children's crisis especially right now until we created ourselves. We're able to utilize theirs. And if we have additional days or we have a child that's not Medicaid eligible, we trade those services because we're creating this program and it's going to filter over into Polk County. So we can just kind of trade those services in kind. Now, we'll keep growing this program and then we'll see how it works with theirs. But there are, you know, we're still going to benefit from some of their services. The other caveat to that is we have to create capacity within our region to serve the system. We have to create those crisis services. We have to develop services where folks, if they do need services, we have to have somewhere for them to go. So we have those additional dollars to do that. And that's what we're doing. We're creating additional services all the time so that officers, if they do need to take someone somewhere, they have that place. We just looked at a building yesterday that, um, would maybe create a system within itself so that they're not flooding ERs and they're not clogging up those, um, services, which would be awesome. So that, in that respect, Polk County can utilize those services out in our areas where if say Lutheran Hospital gets a little clogged, they do come out and utilize our crisis center, those things. So we do trade services. So that's where this was not an issue. Our teams will be working in both Dallas and Polk. And Polk County has known that, Polk County Health Services are now it's, um, what is their new name? Um, the, the us in Polk County, because they've changed. So they know that and they've known that from the start. The CEO and I have been working together on that. So yes, the other part of all of this is each of the departments has agreed to be 100% CIT trained. So they're all getting the 40 hours of mental health training, which is something that back when, um, the county is regionalized in 2014, we were mandated to provide that training, but law enforcement was not mandated to take the training. So it wasn't getting done, but now we're able to get that done. It helps them identify the calls better that need to go to the, the CIT team. And, um, we're getting those redirected a lot better. So it's been an awesome project.
And Eric, or Ted, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to follow up on that question, um, because I had the same question. But, uh, you know, the, the majority of our population is Polk County. And certainly our, our lower income population is much more in Polk County. So in at least conceptually, the vast majority of these calls, I think if you were to look at a percentage basis would, would derive from Polk. So that you're saying that's not an issue with, with your area of being the other three counties?
No.
So like when it comes to, comes to the dispatch center and it's a mental health issue, they're not, they're not, not sending it to you because it's a Polk County, rest of the kind of thing.
It's just coming into the department. It's coming into the officer. It's not being discriminated against because it's going one way or another. It might make a difference on the resources that they utilize. If they're in Polk County, we of course want to hook them up with the resources that they need in Polk County. And we have the ability to do that.
All right. Susan, any, anything?
No, I appreciate hearing the explanation. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Eric, Shrikanth, any, anything on your end?
No, no questions. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I did have a quick question just about the dispatch piece. Um, I, I know you mentioned that each of the CIT members, they're, they're on a 40 hour shift.
Yes.
Are they all located within one dispatch center or, or, you know, is, is it, are they located in the Clive Public Safety Building or somewhere different?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can address that. Uh, the dispatch is still through Westcom Dispatch, uh, like, like any other mental health call we get right now. Uh, but we will provide, uh, office space for the social worker. And we would have a designated, uh, experienced police officer move into the CIT role and then backfill by, by hiring, uh, a new officer.
Okay.
So any, any of those calls that come through Westcom that are, are in the city of Clive and it, it, uh, it matches the criteria that they need, that team would be dispatched if they're on duty. They, uh, may be called in if they need their resources after hours. But then another thing that they do is even more important is follow up. We've all met some, some people that have had a crisis. And then from time to time, they, they may have needs again. This team can go out and do follow-up visits without having a call for service and be able to make sure that they're, they're, you know, if they need help getting to appointments, staying on their meds, that, that kind of support that, that a lot of times is lacking in community-based mental health.
Chief, that's an additional FTE?
Yes, it would be, but the, uh, the 2080 agreement that we're proposing will pay the entire cost of the experienced officer, the fully equipped squad card that's needed. It will even pay for the academy training for a new officer. So yes, we would be moving from 28 sworn officers to 29. And we would have, uh, one and a half of those officers are supported by other agencies. So this officer fully, and we've got one, uh, that is half paid for by the West Des Moines School District.
I assume there'll be more to come on this. I mean, I have additional detailed questions, but.
Yeah, I guess what we're, what we're looking for tonight is, uh, is a nod to move forward. If I'm correct, Matt, we, we put the 2080 agreement out there for you to review, but it's not, uh, we're not looking for you to sign it tonight. We're looking for the, the, um, will of the council for us to move forward and start working out the details that we need to work out.
Yeah, we wanted to present this to you, give Darcy and her team an opportunity to talk a little bit about Walkie's experience. Again, this is just a presentation item tonight. Uh, wanted to see what feedback you have, what further questions you have, uh, that staff could feel that we could work through with the Dallas County team and then ultimately kind of get a sense of, is this something you want us to move, look, look further deeper in? Bring back to you a detailed proposal for your consideration to take advantage of, uh, of these resources to really bring, uh, an important additional service to Clive. And I know we've talked a lot about mental health around this table, uh, in years past. Of course, we have a major facility up the street as well, um, of, of bringing that to the community. And so we wanted to kind of test the concept with you all and, uh, make you aware that this opportunity now has moved, uh, to us. Um, and, and going beyond just the pilot that was, that is happening in Walkie. And, and so if we get that support from you all here tonight, we'll continue to do and, and, and field those, uh, send those questions to, to staff. We'll work through those and then come back to you with a formal proposal for your consideration in the near term.
And would you remind us of the duration of guaranteed funding and then what happens after that?
And I believe the guaranteed funding at this point in the 2080 is for three years. Um, but Darcy, correct me if I'm wrong, this would be coming from those state funds or those direct funds that you're receiving. So the state would have to change that for.
Correct. So the reason why we say, yeah, exactly. So we've been funded for mental health since 1994, I believe. And it's switched over to the state funding mechanism, which obviously that's a priority for the state. Um, but in the current legislation, they just gave us the formula for the next three years. So that's why we're saying three years, because we don't know what the formula is after that.
So maybe that's the only thing that gives me pause, right? I mean, the devil's in the detail and, and just sorry, it's not a bash the state legislator night, but I have no confidence in the state legislators that they're not going to hold the line on backfill or they're not going to hold the line on, you know, other things they've promised and yet pulled away from us over the last five.
That never happens.
So is this 29th officer, is it the city of Clive employee E?
Yes.
And so the funding goes away in three years.
Then we would have to make a determination if that position goes away.
Well, right. And that's the hard thing. Once you get them on and now I've got to say some, to somebody, funding's gone. You know, it was only a year or two ago that we argued for 28 to be the last number for the city of Clive to build out. And now we've got a 29th and it, I see a very difficult time in three years for this council to say.
I think at this point, but at this point, you know, you, all along, this is one of those proof of concept things though. You look at it, it is, are your numbers going to be the same? Are, are you going to be, uh, are you going to utilize it as well as Walkie has? I think you look at that all along though. Is that person going to have the drive to, um, take the calls that we've already seen? And then at that point, do you decide that?
Right.
Yeah. Oh, I have no doubt as well.
And I have no doubt of the good it will do. But way too often do you get the, um, you know, uh, I always use a, probably a poor example, but you get this new razor blade and the cartridges cost $50 after you get the free one, right? I mean, here is a situation that too many times it's been funded by a grant. And especially legislators, I'd be more apt to vote for yes with a grant than I would legislators. Because here they're dangling something and then up, things are tight, they pull the money. We are now forced to say, you care about mental health?
Do you?
Well, right? I mean, that's the force, right? And, or why are you going to get rid of the officer? Well, it was funded before and we don't have it in our budget to fund after the money is gone. And so we have to terminate somebody. It's not an easy decision, right? Anyways, that's just the details I want to hear more, how we're going to get through that.
Well, chief, maybe you could just give two minutes on what happens now versus what will happen with this as far as the consequences for individuals and for the officers.
For, for what goes on right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, I pulled, I did pull some numbers. In, in the last year, um, our officers went to, uh, 40 pure mental health calls, 18 requests by the fire department for police to come help them with a mental health patient, uh, 33 suicide threats or attempts, and then five, uh, suicide attempts where the FD called us. But then that doesn't really tell the whole story. A lot of different types of mental health issues are hidden within other call classes. 350 welfare checks, 120 unwanted persons, 114 disturbance calls and 35 impaired pedestrians. And there are many times that the underlying cause for these other calls are, uh, some other, uh, sort of mental health issue. Right now our officers have to go out and they have to deal with the problem, but they also have the pressure to get this done quickly and get back on the street because there's other calls waiting. Our, our minimum staffing is three. If you tie up two officers handling someone who's experiencing a mental health crisis, you don't have much coverage for the rest of the city and you're asking our neighbors to come in and cover. Uh, one great thing about these teams is they're dedicated to mental health. If they have one mental health call and it takes four hours to spend with that person to, to get them talked down, to get them to treatment, that, that officer and social worker are doing that and it's freeing up the rest of our officers to handle the other calls for service.
And if I could just add on to what he was, the data of the calls, I would honestly say to double that. If there's something that we have found very quickly with Walkie, it was, I think initially they came out that they had received maybe a couple hundred mental health calls in a year. And in the first month, we had 37 and we were only in service for about half of that month due to training. So I mean, if you're looking at one month of maybe 15 days of in-service and over those 15, 16, 17 days, we're seeing 37 calls, there's no way that that is accurate. So what's happening is that you'll be called out on a, on a bird call. Well, then we come to find out that bird call is really not a burglary in progress. It's a mental health call. It doesn't get changed in, in the system. So there's training that's happened on the dispatch side of things. There's trainings that have happened with the officers to request those calls to be, um, you know, changed for the, that, that the data can correctly reflect what we really are dealing with on the street. So while those numbers are in itself large, I would say that there is a greater number than what he's reporting.
And, and for, for my, for my opinion, I don't think there's any way to lose on this financially. It's fully supported by this grant for at least three years. And, and if, uh, we've, we've had, said we have a desire to do something different, to do something more than we're doing. And I don't think we'll ever have a better opportunity to do so. And if the worst thing that would happen is the funding went away in, in three years, then we would have to make a decision at that, at that point, what we, what we do. And we would at least have three years of data to understand if we're, if we're making an impact on people suffering from, uh, mental health crises.
So I, I have.
Oh, go ahead, Shrikanth.
Well, I, I was just going to ask, so I, I have a question a little bit on the opposite end of the spectrum from Councilmember McCoy, actually. Um, I'm, I'm curious, you know, with that many calls, uh, you know, uh, I think Walkie already saw like a, you know, a pretty big need. How, how does one team handle that? You know, that sounds like a lot for one, one CIT officer and a, and social worker to handle.
You've, you've been there. You've been there.
Um, so it, it's truly, it's a, it's a department effort. It's not just on us as the two people team. Um, when we are not in service, the officers all have training as far as what to do. It reverts back to, um, the, the mobile crisis kind of model that we're using right now. Uh, there's communication between all shifts. Um, internally, there's forums that are created and ways that we're notified. So while it is busy, um, a lot of these are familiar faces. Uh, there, there are ones that once we kind of get our, our foot in the door with them, we're able to maintain them, um, longer in their homes without the need of. So sometimes they're calling in just for checks, but it counts as a call, right? So, um, it, it just depends on the nature of it. I think that ultimately with these, with the higher populated cities, we're going to be looking at having to have multiple teams. I don't know that Walkie will ever get there, um, just based off their size now and their call volume now. But I, I do think like, for example, West Des Moines would have to have multiple teams. Uh, because it, it won't just be a two-person team. It's going to be bigger than this.
So is that based on general population or, or more on like calls or, or is there criteria?
It's a combined, yeah, I think it's a combined data collection of, of all of it, of population, of numbers, um, of calls for service. Uh, and then also the need depending on the timeframes and, and those types of things.
Right. So what's, we know that West Des Moines has 2,100 calls per year of what they've actually counted as mental health. So we're looking at, once we get all of the cities rolled out and get an actual count of what their mental health calls are, going back and looking at who needs additional teams. Um, we're also looking at, so we have a team that does the training for our entire region, for the CIT, for consulting, for what these teams are actually going to do. So we're also looking at what is the training that they can do? I've talked with them today about what my contract for next year is going to look at like, because these departments will mostly be trained on this end of the region. We'll be doing some trainings out in the other part of the region. But also what is the next phase of training for the CIT teams? What else can they be utilized for? The other things we're looking at is peer support within each of the departments. We all know there's a need for that. Then we're looking at health and wellness for the officers on all of the departments. That training has been extremely beneficial when they've done them in our region and we don't get that nearly enough. So we're looking at those additional trainings. But we also have to take a look at, is there a way for, um, these teams to cover for each other? Somebody gets bogged down on a call, can we do mutual aid? Can we do those things? They're going to be a support for each other. So they will be communicating with each other on a regular basis. They will be working together. They will be finding better ways to do things. And so in that regard, it is going to be a really fantastic thing for these teams to be working together. They won't be on an island within their own department. And I love that concept and I think it's really cool. It's new and different. The other piece of that, we've talked about the mental health calls, but we haven't talked about the jail diversion piece. How many of our folks end up in jail because they have a mental health issue, but the officer chose to take them to jail rather than diverting them somewhere else? We have a better way of doing that pre-booking jail diversion through these teams than we've ever had before. Because there, that team is able to, rather than hustling to get back out there so they can be on patrol, they have this team that they can contact that can handle that call and figure out where these folks are supposed to go, rather than sending them to jail. And that is huge because when somebody with a mental health issue gets bogged down in jail, they end up going back to jail multiple. they end up going back to jail multiple times. They end up with fines, they end up with court, end up with jail costs, they end up with it all. And they just cycle back and back and back. That's why these teams are equally as important.
And I agree. I mean, I think this is a very important issue. I'm just, these sound like longer, more involved calls in the first place.
Yep.
And I'm concerned about, you know, if, if we have that volume of calls like Waki was seeing or, or, you know, somewhere around there, how does one team handle that? But, but I appreciate the, the mutual aid piece. I would like, I'd be interested to hear more about what correct kind of criteria you're looking at to make a determination of, okay, at this call volume or these types of calls or whatever that combination may be, you start talking about additional, you know, additional team members. But on the flip side, I, you know, I know that funding is always, always in the back of everyone's head. So that's also there as well to balance.
What I can tell you about the funding, and I know it's hard to see because it's not tangible and you guys are not on that side of it like me. The thing about the regions and what we're finding is we get more and more and more. They're talking about redoing the child love, welfare side and all of that. I only see us getting more, so I don't see us going anywhere. And I know that's something that you can't see. But I see it daily and I'm a part of it daily. So I don't see us going anywhere. The only thing that I can tell you this tangible is I know the funding formula for the next three years. And that's something that is always, I don't want to bash on legislators. I find that some of them are extremely useful and I can get their ears and they can be really awesome. Whoever put that formula out there and put that in front of everybody just didn't go further than 2025. So I have a hard time believing that those funding mechanisms, mechanisms aren't going to be there because the regions aren't going anywhere. We're just getting more and more work placed on us. So that's what I can say about that piece.
Darcy, wouldn't you agree also that when you're shifting funds from the court system and the jail system for these resources, that'll reduce the impact and the cost and the need in the court system and perhaps shift funding to the front end of the problem?
Absolutely. And I know they are really looking at the jail diversion piece of it and what's going on in the jail system. And that's huge right now.
Ted, did you have any further?
One quick comment. I, I, I just want to say, I, I think multiple things can be true here at the same time. What Mike's point is absolutely valid, right? I mean, without, we, we've seen that before.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't, I think it's also indisputable that there's value to the residents, to our officers who are not trained to deal with this kind of stuff to the jail system. So I think, I think all those things can be true at the same time. And I think the chief's point was, was really valid in saying that, you know, we're probably not going to get a better opportunity to get this up and running at minimal cost to us. And, and then we'll have at a minimum three years of data to revisit. And then we can make an informed judgment at that time. But, you know, to, to get something started here on the front end, to me, seems like a no-brainer.
Okay, so you're, you're good with going with this, right? And you also have PowerPoint presentations from NAMI Iowa, Mental Health and Criminal Justice in Iowa. This has a lot of statistics that you may be interested in. Seventy percent of all inmates in Iowa have a substance use disorder. So I mean, so much of the reporting that we see from the police department, as was mentioned earlier, masks the facts that, that these folks have mental health conditions. You know, and but they're arrested for drug abuse for this area. So that, those PowerPoints will give you a lot of data that'll be helpful, I think, in understanding the scope of the problem. The chief and I were at this program last night and I learned a lot. Just about particularly the statistics and the impact. And the jail diversion in particular is very positive. You mentioned the, the recurring cycle. A lot of these folks that are arrested are on meds to treat their disorders. If they're in jail, they're not getting their meds and just, it gets worse and worse and worse. So I think this is a great program, a great opportunity, as you say, Ted, to, to do a lot better for these citizens.
I just really appreciate the discussion. I don't have anything to add or any questions.
Up or down? Michael?
I, I'm for pursuing it. I just have a lot of questions that are going to follow up prior to a vote on this. And one I would like from the chief is with your data you pulled to provide us with unique callers. So we talk about twenty-one hundred calls or your, however many calls. How many of those are unique callers, right? By name?
Versus repeat?
Correct.
Familiar faces?
Yeah. And so those are.
Training me.
Some of these statistics are going to be important and, and the mayor has said, you know, there's, there's a lot of numbers in here. I'm very supportive of the idea. I understand it's a big issue, but I also have to weigh in, you know, whether this contract says the officer is hired for three years and released if the, you know, and then we can choose, but it's already in the contract that they're released in three years. Then we can make the hard decision to say, no, we're going to keep them. At least we, they know that they're going to be released after, if there's no funding. Right? And if we want to step up and make it so they stay, that's another thing, right? But putting us on the spot to say, we're going to terminate you, that puts us in a heck of a spot, right? And again, I would love to see this program go forever. I know it's real. I know the problem is real.
And we'd be glad to bring together some more detailed information for you. Again, just looking for that nod for us to start doing that, that detailed work, all the financials, the searching for the, the right, the right individual to, to take that on. Because we want, and we don't want a new officer, we want an experienced police officer who's been on the street dealing with these things. And so if, if you all are supportive, we will put together more information for you.
I can't see Eric's head. Are you nodding one way or the other, Eric?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. Having a wife that's a mental health nurse and also has done extensive correctional nursing, I can certainly concur with, you know, the volume of, of the need out there, right? It's, it's growing, it's real and it's a tremendous time drain, Chief. And I, I certainly understand as well, seeing some of the, the videos out there regarding policing we've had. It's, it's a huge time drain from our current force. I would be interested in, in moving this forward. I also share the concerns in three years, what we do next. Again, now I don't want to echo what Councilmembers McCoy and Weaver have said, but we've seen this before. But, you know, I think it's, there's a lot of value to giving this three years, looking at the data and at least taking this to the next level. So I'm in favor of continuing to look at this.
And I think Srikanth, you'd already indicated you're supportive, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. So looks like you've got the green light to proceed to come back with a.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Part is in that folder. So any questions, call me or email me.
Thank you.
You can put that folder in my box. I would like to take a look at that.
Yeah.
I would ask the same thing, actually.
Thank you. We'll move on to our action items and the first item is the Iowa Trust and Savings Bank site plan. Jill?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll use the dot key. If it works.
Cross your fingers.
Oh. Well, they should have all this. I just was going to throw it up for all of our. Wow. Thank you. All right. So what you have before you is Iowa Trust and Savings Bank. They're looking at the northeast corner of Hickman and 156th Street. This is previously a vacant lot owned by Come and Go. Obviously, they chose to build on the southeast corner as we, as we know. So it's remained undeveloped. They're looking to build a fourteen thousand square foot two-story building. Building materials are high-quality brick and stone with about a third of the total facade going to windows and other glazing. There'll be a drive-through on the north side of the building with an ATM and an ITM. An ITM is an interactive teller unit, which is only available during business hours. So they're not talking to someone. You can't pull up to the ATM at two o'clock in the morning and talk to someone around the world. It's just a bank employee in the building during business hours you can talk to face to face. We got the decibel levels of that as well and they are well below acceptable noise levels at the property line. So we don't have any concerns with those, with that device. There will also be entrances to the site constructed off of 156th Street and Emerald Isle Drive with pedestrian connections from 156 Emerald Isle Drive and Hickman Road. There are forty, forty-two parking stalls required by code for the bank use, but the applicant would like to construct fifty-nine parking stalls based on the anticipated number of employees for the building. Additional open space has been provided to accommodate those additional stalls. The site is actually going to be around forty-six percent open space and only twenty-five percent is required. So they'll, they're well above that requirement. About ninety-five trees we planted on the site with a fifty-foot landscape buffer to the north to buffer those homes that are in that area. Pretty robust landscaping plan that's in your packet as well. There is a one privacy fence to the east, which is going to serve as, as the buffer for now since we know that properties in that area are slated for future commercial and retail services. So we're not looking for an additional buffer in kind of an interim time. Existing utility services are available to the site in close proximity for connections. Stormwater management requirements are being met through above and below ground detention. A portion of Emerald Isle Drive adjacent to the property will also be improved, including a dedicated right turn lane at Emerald Isle Drive and 156th Street. To date, staff has not received any comments on the project. This item was unanimously approved by PNZ at the October sixth meeting. There were a handful of remaining comment letter items. Those have since been addressed. So staff merkman's approval. If you have any questions for me, or there are quite a few members from the project here as well.
Questions for Jill? Eric or Srikanth?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. Jill, I did notice that there was some concern about lights affecting the neighborhood. However, we couldn't quantify that to moving to this meeting. Could you give us a little more background on that and what, how we intend to, to deal with that?
Yeah. So since then, that was the majority of the comments left in the letter. We have received their lighting plan with photometrics and it's pretty standard for this type of site. Pole lights that meet our standard, building lights that meet our standard. The photometric plan has zero spill at the property line. So everything that they have submitted for their lighting plan meets, meets our, meets our standard.
Thank you.
Just a, a quick question on my end. On the Emerald Isle Drive side, are we expecting any increase in traffic flow that's substantial because of that kind of entrance there?
I wouldn't expect any substantial increase in traffic for this bank location. I would assume, you know, they're going to have a little, a little more during start and stop times for the business. Because I assume like a typical bank, they probably have standard daytime hours. So obviously when those employees are coming during the day and leaving in the evening, they'll, they'll see a little bit more traffic versus a vacant lot. But I would say, you know, when it could be quite a bit more of an intensive use, you know, like a gas station or a fast food restaurant or something like that, this is going to be pretty low intensity compared to those other types of uses.
Thank you.
Very good. What we're looking for is approval of the site plan and preliminary plat.
Move for.
Second.
Do a motion in a second. Further discussion. Seeing none with the council, please vote. And will clerk please post that vote? Suspense. Okay. Five votes, five to zero. So good luck. I understand there's a groundbreaking tomorrow morning. Is that correct? Nine AM?
Nine thirty.
That's a lot of risk on this vote tonight. Cancel the cake.
Very much appreciate the investment in our community.
It's great looking site.
Yeah, yeah, project.
Good luck. Moving on to coffee, Jill?
Yes, the next item is now we're looking at the southwest corner of the same intersection. Also kind of previously Come and Go gas station. So what we're looking at here is a coffee shop drive-through. Yes, this is the previous Come and Go site that has been vacant for a couple of years now. The, obviously the gas canopy and tanks under, under the parking lot there have been removed. So this structure is looking to go pretty much where those old gas canopy and tanks were. So it's a five hundred and ten square foot building. It's just drive-through service only. I think they're looking at maybe a picnic table or two outside, but there's no interior service there. So they are, have two drive-through lanes. And with, with this, the configuration of the site, and since we are doing infill and it's a little bit tight, they did get a board of adjustment variance back in July to encroach into the sixty-foot front yard setback about four feet. So they just needed to do that to make that building fit exactly where they needed to and to get the two drive-through lanes to go through the site with the existing building and parking stalls and drive-through lanes to the south that needed, everything needed to fit there. The, the convenience store is going to remain onsite and used by the applicant as a regional training facility for other seven brew locations. So they're not looking to demolish that building or doing much with it besides just general maintenance and upkeep. And they're going to reuse the building. The new building will have a full brick, brick facade with blue canopy trim. And as you can see on the renderings, there's also a remote cooler and we asked that to be a full brick facade as well. There is an LED strip light around the blue areas, the canopy of the building. Staff looked at those photometrics and the plan for those and we think it's going to be a pretty muffled, haloey, soft subdued light for, for that area. For site circulation, like I mentioned, it's about where the old canopy and gas tanks were. They are adding just a little bit of concrete to the north to be able to fit those two drive-through lanes in that they're looking for. There's also a pedestrian connection from Hickman that's going to be constructed as well for walk-up service. One parking stall does need removed to incorporate some new stormwater management practices. But the site with adding such a small building, they don't require any additional parking than what's already there. There are quite a few damaged ash trees onsite and some other landscaping that obviously needs removed. If you've kind of noticed, it's not looking so great in that corner. So those are all part of the plan to be removed and replaced with other species. Along 156th Street, it's a little bit different than what we normally do. You may not have noticed, but along, running north and south along 156th Street, there's quite a few fairly low-hanging overhead power lines there. So we worked with the applicant to put in some understory trees. We normally would always ask for overstory trees for street trees, but with those power lines there, they're either going to need highly pruned, not too long in the near future. Or they'd have to be removed and replanted anyway with something else. So we have some overstory trees in that area that's a little different than what we normally ask for. So this doesn't quite make the fifty percent overstory tree requirement that the city has. But based on the constraints of the site, it would be incredibly difficult to do. Or we would just get less quality trees and species in that area. We'd rather have something that fits and looks nice for the site rather than just throwing overstory trees that we know are going to get pruned anyway.
Yeah, what a much better look later on, right, than a butchered tree. I mean, you can see that in places of, it just, it doesn't sit well.
Yeah. So we switch our species quite a bit for skinnier and shorter trees in that area to better fit around those existing power lines. There's also a fifty-foot landscaping buffer along 156th Street that staff will be looking at vacating in the near future. It was never established. It doesn't need to be there, so that will be coming before you, kind of as just a cleanup measure to get rid of that existing buffer that was never established along 156th Street. Utilities are all very close on site since it's already developed, those will be tied in. Some general stormwater management practices will be incorporated along with. Some general stormwater management practices will be incorporated along with soil quality restoration and a bio-retention cell. To date, staff has not received any comments on the project. All comments in the letter, staff letter have been satisfied and PNZ recommended approval at the October meeting. Staff would also recommend approval, and there's a number of folks here from the project willing to speak if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Jill? Ted?
So, my one question is, in some of these projects with these, these coffee shops that we've seen, especially the drive-up ones, is where they get a long buffer line of cars that queue up and can impact. And I know there's some distance there from Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street into where the, the building will be, but have we thought about that? Is that a concern that it could get back into where folks are turning from Hundred and Fifty-Sixth into that little strip mall area?
Yeah, planning and zoning had the same concern, and I can't remember the number, thirty-seven, thirty-one? Thirty-one cars can line up without getting out of the site, so I would hope they are probably quick enough to get, to, to not have more than thirty-one cars. Not have that many cars backed up. So, yeah, we don't see that as a concern.
Good point, though, that Hundred and Fourteenth Street is, you know, one example.
Starbucks over there, yeah.
Two of them.
I think it's a great project. I appreciate you bringing it forward, both staff and, and the owners. That's a, it's a great fit in a spot that's a hard, was going to be, I thought, a, a hard area to fill, right? What we were going to put in there, what was going to go in there. So you're keeping the building and adding on, right? So, well done, thinking out of the box, and thank you for bringing that to us.
Eric, Shrikan, any comments?
Yeah, I'm excited as well. You know, this site has sat vacant for a while. I think it's a really nice fit, and to the owners, thanks for your investment. Clive, and we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, no additional comments, it's already been said.
Very good. What we're looking for is a motion to approve the site plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve site plan amendment. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you and good luck. Now we're going to talk about the Flock safety cameras, which we talked about earlier. And I think we have a presentation.
Okay. And do we have someone from Flock on there? Okay, good. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to see you again. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about a proposal for our Flock safety cameras. First question is, why do we want to use this technology? As we talked about during our strategic planning session, this was a, a desire of mine. As I said, back then, I don't get very excited about technology, but this is one that really piqued my interest on what the capabilities were. And Clive is a really safe city, personal, personal safety. We have very few personal violence crimes. Most of those are interpersonal, interrelationship sort of violence. But we do have a bit of a property crime problem. As I talked about before, we're kind of a, a target-rich environment. People feel very safe in Clive, so that kind of works against us because people feel safe enough to leave their cars unlocked, leave their garage doors open and things like that. And it drives our property crime rates up. Our property crime rates are higher than the rest of the state of Iowa, and I'm not real pleased with our clearance rate. We, we set a kind of a high bar for our clearance rate, but it's, it's tough to clear property crimes because generally, there's not a, a witness. If it's interpersonal violence, one person hits another, we know, usually know who it is, and those are, are high solve rate crimes. But if twenty cars get gone through overnight and nobody sees anyone, nobody sees a suspect vehicle going in and out of the area at two o'clock in the morning, we have twenty crimes that probably go unsolved. And as you can see, very quickly, that drives our, our solve rate down when most of these are, are, occur without a, a witness. Well, our detective resources are limited, and so we're looking to add Flock cameras to work as a force multiplier for our, our detectives and our patrol officers. Flock is, I would say, license, automatic license plate reader system on steroids. It reads license plates, and not only does it read license plates, it takes a vehicle fingerprint. It reads the back of a vehicle, and by its, its machine learning, it has determined what the back end of a Dodge pickup truck looks like, and it's able to, even if it doesn't have a license plate on it, it can map a silver Dodge pickup truck as it goes by. So if we have, let's say we have a lot of crimes in one area and, and it's in the middle of the night, very few cars should be moving, we can check the system and see what cars are popping up on that system, and we can, we can use that to help follow up. If we have a, a crime where a, a plate number is known, we can, we can enter that and find where it's been in our community. The great thing about...
Sorry, did you want to share your slides as well? We're not able to see them.
Oh, you're not seeing my slides?
Go ahead and invite our, the lectern speaker.
Sorry.
That's okay. There we go.
Okay. So, one of the nice things about these is they're very low impact for deployment. This photo is one that I took of a deployment in Urbendale. We can use our existing infrastructure. It's basically, the, the metal bands attach a camera and a solar power source. They use cellular communication for the camera to upload the information. There's no power, no data needed. The, the systems are in use in a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions, are in use in West Des Moines, Urbendale, Altoona, Council Bluffs, Clinton, and I'm told coming soon to Muscatine, Iowa. Also, some of our neighboring states, Douglas County, Nebraska, right across the river from Council Bluffs, and over in Quad Cities area, Silvis, Illinois, Peoria, and Fulton, Illinois, birthplace of yours truly, so, little-known fact. Another great thing about, about Flock is then we, we do not have just access to our data. We also have access to all the data in other jurisdictions who have given permission for their data be looked at by other law enforcement agencies. So if we've got a, a car we're looking for, we, it hasn't gone past any of our cameras, we can, at the same time, check all of these other cameras at one time, and you can see where they're at, or where that vehicle has been. Wanted to share a few success stories. These, some kind of interesting little crimes that were detected in Altoona. The system detected this pickup truck and a stolen motorcycle in the back, and the system was able to read both of those license plates, and they got a hit on the stolen motorcycle, and it also read the truck plate. The detectives in Altoona found out it was a stolen motorcycle out of Des Moines. They were able to turn over the information on where Des Moines police can go to look for that stolen vehicle. Otherwise, that motorcycle would have been long gone and probably in pieces before anyone was able to follow up on it. Another from Altoona, their public library had a computer stolen out of it, and if you can see on the left, a surveillance photo of the car leaving. And you can see it's a, it's a silver sedan, you might guess it's some, some models, but that's about all you had to go on, and that wouldn't be a very solvable crime. But a nearby Flock camera picked up that same vehicle leaving. As you can see, in the surveillance photo, on the right rear tire, you can see all the, the rust, and you see the matching on the, the Flock camera, but that one includes a license plate, so it's clearly visible and gives the detectives someplace to go to, to find that stolen computer. Urbendale has, has had really great things to say about the, the system. In, in the first month, it led directly to eight different arrests. One of the arrests they had was a hit on a vehicle connected to a wanted person. It was a wanted person from Clive. We had gotten the warrant, we couldn't find the person. The system was set up that it will send a, a notice out to the patrol officers out in the car that a, a car, either a stolen car or a car connected with a wanted person just drove by our camera at this location, and it is real time. As soon as it hits that, that hot list, it sends out the information. The officers were able to wait down the street and find that vehicle and make that arrest. We've had a success here in Clive besides that, even before we have the, the cameras. Willis Auto had a theft of some very valuable equipment that was in, in the back lot. Their surveillance photo showed a gray Dodge truck with a push bumper on it. One of our detectives got into the Flock system, and he told the system, between this time and this time, show me gray Dodge trucks anywhere that's gone past any of Urbendale's cameras. And he started searching those photos, and he found a, a truck with a matching push bumper and matching damage on that, and was able to go and find and recover that property for, for Willis Auto. Those are all kind of small, run-of-the-mill crimes. Sometimes, once in a while, it will hit really, really big. Amber Alert is a, is a good example of that. Back in 2020 in Georgia, and I read a newspaper article on, on this crime. A man and woman kidnapped this child from his mother at gunpoint. They wanted another child. They took this child at gunpoint. Amber Alert was put out immediately because the mom had got a, a plate number. A little while later, sixty miles away, there was another Flock camera system in another city in Georgia, and it hit that that suspect vehicle had appeared sixty miles away. Officers there were able to find, stop that car, and by six o'clock that night, were able to get that, that child back to his, his mother. Again, that's a very rare thing, but it's nice to know that when the really bad things happen, this, the system can support us. And I also am very aware that there are privacy concerns on automated license plate readers. Just wanted to, to give some assurances that the, the footage on these cameras will be owned by us, and Flock does not share it or, or sell it. We can, with our permission, share that with other law enforcement agencies, but it's not shared with private entities. The data is held for thirty days. It's a hard thirty days. It's deleted and not recoverable after thirty days. Our, the, the salesman was very clear on that. It, on day thirty-one, it doesn't matter if you're looking for a homicide suspect, that information has been deleted, erased, and not available. That makes it harder for, if you were going to be using it to like gather intelligence on, on somebody for, for politics or something like that. If, if you've only got thirty days worth of data, it's going to be more centered on criminal activity. You're not going to do a long-term investigation on, on other kind of activities.
But, but how can that be hard and fast if the data, if the data is owned by us? If we own that?
We signed the agreement that the data goes away after, after thirty days. That's the, that is a hard and fast rule of, of, of Flock, and they, they do so to protect other people's privacy. If, go ahead.
Just, just to clarify there, though, there's nothing to stop us from creating our own kind of backup, if you want to call it that. Copy of it. Yeah, copy every thirty days and, and kind of keep that in perpetuity.
I don't know of any, but when we're done, there is a representative from Flock who's here on Zoom, and I'd be glad to, to let her answer those technical questions.
Okay. Yeah, I, I do have a few other technical questions, too.
Okay. All right, you might want to save those because I probably won't have the answers to those.
Sure.
The, the data is all stored very securely. Some of you might know what the AWS government cloud is with end-to-end encryption. And when we do a search, we, the, you have to sign in to the system so it knows what officer is using the system. You have to enter in a, in a field why you're doing a search. It has to be a, like a, a report number generally is what you would put in there, but there's an audit trail to show that if, if it is misused, that you'll be able to find who is misusing and be able to, to deal with that problem. There is no facial recognition software on this, and there's no personal identifying information on the system. It's strictly reads the rear license plate of a car, doesn't do anything with any of the occupants. A very high percentage of property crimes have a car somewhere involved with it. Most people who are going out and stealing from, from cars, shoplifters that are, are fleeing from a store, everybody's using a car. So this, it would be a, a great tool for us to use in a lot of those.
It'd also work on motorcycles or other vehicles as well, right?
Yes, it does. And Shrikan, I may say if somebody was involved in a hit-and-run accident on, on university, perhaps, and all they could say is it was a silver truck that, that hit their car and fled, we would have had that vehicle in hand by now.
That did not escape me.
So, and Pete, do you want to bring Laura on? Laura Ann Holland is from Flock, and she has offered to answer any technical questions, and I can turn that, I can turn you loose.
Yes, hi, and good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here and answer any questions that you have about Flock. I know that we already might have had a question on data retention, so if, if we want to start there?
Please do.
Okay, great. I think that was the, the councilman on Zoom. If you want to repeat your question?
Yeah, so I was curious that, at least based on the, what I've reviewed so far, it looks like there's nothing that would stop us, the agency, from downloading that data before that thirty, you know, retention period ends, and then we could manage the retention separately. So theoretically, you know, we could set it up so that every twenty-nine days, we do a full, you know, download.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I, it just really that we could, we could decide to keep that longer, right, at that point?
So, a couple things on that. And first, any of the searches that you run have to be associated with an active investigation. So in the Flock system, you can't just download all of the data, you know, point, point-blank because you have to do it by search. And it would need to then be downloaded onto, you know, a, a separate server or, or separate storage system. And it, in that case, that investigative data could have a different retention policy based on whatever your department's information retention policy is.
So, and that, and that's a good clarification there. So on the, on that search requirement that needs to be logged, is that, is that a technical limitation, or is that more of a process limitation where you, you just have to, you have to enter in some sort of code to get past that window of, you know, the audit?
Yes. So we, we created that because of the, the, the issues of civil liberties, quite frankly, right? We want to make sure that there's, each of the searches is attached to some kind of active investigation, and it's not, it's not being done without oversight, right? And so that search reason, and for your chief's policy, is going to be specific to the active criminal investigations that your, their department has ongoing. And that information is actually going to be proactively reported to him in an audit report in the Flock system. So that audit report will list every single search that's conducted, for what reason, what devices were searched, what time, who did the search. And that way, you know, it's always possible systems can be misused, and so we want to be able to put in controls to prevent that from happening or act if we know that it's happened. And so that will be able to allow your chief to have the information to do that and to act if it's misused.
And, and does that work with, and that is an excellent, yeah, that's an excellent feature, and, and like you said, no system is foolproof, but you have to do whatever you can, right, within reasonable measures? I, I am wondering, on the hot lists and, and the ability to, to kind of cross-search with other Flock cameras and other community areas, is there a similar logging requirement, or is that more up to the discretion of those other cities and the way they've implemented it? So, you know, theoretically, I'm not saying this is the case, but if Urbendale doesn't have that logging requirement, or it's a lower requirement than what we implement, would they be able to search into our cameras using their requirements? would they be able to search into our cameras using their requirements rather than ours?
Yeah, so so everybody in the system has that investigative search, right? And and so regardless of what network they're a part of, that anytime that your devices are searched, it will be reported to your chief. So if there's, you know, your chief sees there's somebody that's not putting in a criminal investigation, he'll be able to contact that agency immediately through the Flock system. So that applies to all users. You know, the investigative, the way people handle investigations and case numbers, it looks different across different departments. And so it it's not, I can't tell you that it's going to be the same across the board. But we do provide the information for that investigative portion for all all people using the network, right? All admins using the network. On the hot list piece that you brought up, and to clarify, those hot lists and actually have to be verified by the officers before they take action. So let's say there was, like you said, in Urbendale, somebody put in a specific hot list. And your chief policy is that the officers would then have to confirm that what's in the whatever shows up on the hot list is actually still valid.
I I think it's important to note that the Flock system doesn't have access to all your license plate information through NCIC, where they could run a plate and see who owns a vehicle. What they do is they get a download, I think it's four times a day, of active stolen vehicles and vehicles that are associated with wanted people all across the country. So they get this hot list dumped on them four times a day to make sure it's it's accurate. And what the system is actually searching is that hot list. Flock is not going out to NCIC. They're just looking at a list that was provided to them. We can also add custom plates to the hot list. Let's say that we've got information that a vehicle with a certain plate number has been involved in late-night thefts around Clyde, but we we can never seem to find them. They've been going to construction sites and and stealing things from construction sites. We can set up that plate into a custom hot list that will notify our patrol officers out in the street that, hey, that car is moving. It's it's coming toward this part of the city and allow our officers to go into that area and and do an investigation. Also, I I want to reiterate the fact if we get a hit on the hot list that that this is a stolen vehicle, that is not probable cause for a stop just based on the hot list. The officer is going to have to get behind that car, run that plate as they usually do, and get the hit directly from NCIC to confirm that that's associated with a wanted person or that is actually a stolen car. And that is in the 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 sample policy that I put along with our our presentation.
Thank you. Couple more questions, and I will try to keep them brief. So one thing I was wondering, I didn't see any documentation. And and, you know, maybe it's available on the website separately. But there was a piece about the AWS government AES two fifty-six encryption, but I didn't see any further documentation on your kind of technical and organizational measures. As far as if you guys have like a seam or or a, you know, a sock or or any of the things that you guys are doing on your end.
Yes, yes, so we take security very, very seriously at Flock. And I'm happy to provide you guys a one-page overview that the chief can share with you after this meeting. But just so it's on public record, right? We we are SOC two compliant. And and we have a whole team of folks at Flock that are making sure that those servers are secure. So on our end, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the the data is is safe. Another thing that I'll add on top of that is our devices actually don't have IP addresses, so the devices themselves can't be hacked externally, which I think is another level of of protection for your community.
Yeah, that's that's actually unique. I haven't heard that before, so that's great. So one other question, based on the the agreement, the sample agreement that was in the packet, there was a level of license to aggregated data, right? For not only for machine learning, but also for non-agency-related access. Can you speak a little bit? And maybe there's separate documentation on this that's more, you know, more on point. But I'd like to learn what level of aggregation we're talking about. Is it is it more of a, you know, we're we're just going to aggregate the, you know, however many cameras are in this community or in this particular neighborhood? Or is it more of a, we're going to aggregate based on, you know, demographics of some sort?
Definitely not not based on demographics. I can follow up with you on specifics, but that section typically applies to our our machine learning capability. And we definitely are not doing it based on any sort of demographic component like race, age, gender, none of that. But I will follow up with you on more specifics.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that. And then the last question I have is kind of broader. You know, Iowa has a pretty narrow scope of what is defined as personal information or PII. That may change, given any number of of winds that are blowing. One in particular that I I was wondering if you guys have done any planning or any, you know, anticipatory actions with respect to like the ADPBA or or similar laws to what we've seen in Utah, Colorado, Connecticut, Virginia, and then, of course, California?
Yeah, so we we're in actively in all of those places. And we have a a full team that's making sure that our system is compliant in each of those places. If there are specific issues that come up in Iowa about around how personal information is identified, we will definitely address them. But I think the great thing about the data that we're providing your department is that it's just that picture of the back of the vehicle, right? And so a- at this point, the current case law says that that's public information.
Sure. Okay, sounds great. And I guess, sorry, one last question. Do you guys do you guys standardize on kind of, you know, a typical highest bar requirement? Like, for example, let's say California is the highest bar that we have. Do you guys standardize on that and then make that available kind of broadly across the US? Or is it still more, we're going to look at what's required in each state? And I know that's a hyper-specific question, so, you know, I'm okay with, I need to come back with some information on that, too.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm happy also to to answer your questions, you know, individually, too. And I I do know that our our system is is pretty much the the same across the board, right? We've got folks in different communities across state lines sharing. But I'll I'll follow up with our product team specifically on that level of of standardization.
Perfect, thank you.
TreeCon, no worries. Ted and I both gave you our questions.
I I appreciate that, yeah.
Someone had.
Oh, there are more questions, Michael?
I do have one, and it's just a pet peeve of mine in my day job. When I see the terms and terminations and there are automatic renewals. I I don't allow automatic renewals. I just don't like them. And then second, in the termination and convenience, it's a very one-sided termination where you you hit us with removal fees of five hundred, but if you terminate, there's no fee. I I guess that's another one I would never agree to. One, automatic renewals. And two, we get hit with fees you don't get. I mean, straight up says termination convenience, Flock will not salt the removal fees. But for us, it will. I guess you're writing the contract so you can write it how you want, but I think we can redline it how we want it.
Well, we we have made quite a few adjustments to that contract, Christina.
Seven redlines to this. Particularly, Mr. Councilmember Mickelani, four point five aggregated data was significantly addressed. But as to the termination provisions, we can take another look at that. I will say, and maybe I'll toss from you to you as a business concern on that particular paragraph. The chief is very comfortable with the with the debt of the technology that's coming in. He's very comfortable with, I guess, the risk of the price for removal or tear down. This is not like, if I may liken it to our antennas on like the water towers, for example, this is relatively easy to install and remove from the Public Works Department.
But at five hundred dollars a a piece of equipment that we get fine, we get hit with fees of five hundred dollars per. They're easy to get down. They're two straps. You cut them and they come down. But you're also getting hit with fees that aren't going to the other side if they're to pull out. I just, I guess I don't like those one-sided agreements, nor do I ever sign one with an automatic renewal. That's a personal thing.
Yeah, so so one one thing, just to make sure that that everybody on the council knows is on our product is actually a leasing model, which means that we own the devices and you got and that means we take care of them, right? So a lot of times with these license plate reader systems in the past, you would have to spend a lot of money upfront to purchase the technology. And then your community would be responsible for maintenance and for upgrades. But with Flock, we're just a set fee per device every year, which allows you guys to get upgrades. And so if you guys choose not to continue the contract, right? And you would also be vacating all of that additional support and servicing, which goes from permitting and and and, you know, training and all of that that we're providing your police department for for the the base rate of twenty-five hundred dollars per device.
And for our trial period for the sixty days, we were anticipating putting in twenty units. And but we don't anticipate that we're going to keep all of those. At the end of that sixty days, those that we've studied and decided aren't really paying off, we will have those removed and we will only continue with the number of locations that we find are useful and that the council is comfortable in the ongoing costs for those.
Yeah, I think that's an important point for this agreement. This isn't a sample agreement that's on the council agenda. This is the agreement that's been drafted and for your consideration. And so I think that's a key point here is this is really, although the agreement covers what would happen after the pilot, the the test period, if you will. The council could decide to completely walk away after that test period and not pay anything. And so that is what we talked about in strategic planning is that we wanted to set up where we had that test period. We still have to have the budget conversation of whether or not the council's comfortable with the investment that's here, whether it's ten cameras, twenty cameras, five cameras, whatever it may be, or zero. So there is another decision point to come following the testing period. And I think, Chief, if what I understood was is the testing period isn't likely to start until the winter, just in terms of where they're at in their scheduling. Is that correct?
Yeah, the the testing period won't start until all twenty cameras are in and ready to go and turned on. So we, the last conversation we had was, depending on on what happened tonight, it would probably be January by the time all of them were in, best-case scenario, and that's if if everything works out well. So then we would have sixty days after that. My plan would be to come back to the council with a report on on the effectiveness of those cameras, which if if we feel they're useful to keep at all, and if so, how many? And I'll be able to share with you hopefully some success stories that that we've found over those sixty days to help you make a determination on us going forward with the more of a permanent lease contract.
Go ahead, Michael.
I did not go to Drake Law School, so I'm one of the few up here. But but I just have some, I I need some assurance here. I don't see in this agreement that in anywhere I get the Falcon and the two thousand, the twenty at twenty-five hundred, fifty thousand, I get all that. This contract, though, specifically says we're signing it for an initial term of twelve months with renewals, automatic renewals of up to twenty-four months. We're signing a three-year contract here. And it doesn't say anywhere that I can see this. Again, they're automatic renewals, and it also then I don't see where it says we can get rid of fifteen of these in sixty days and keep five and then reduce the cost. Because this contract is very specific on what we're paying. We're paying fifty-nine thousand, five hundred for the first year, fifty-two thousand, five hundred, twelve-month term, twenty-four renewal.
The six point four is your no-fee term. There's a period of thirty thirty days, whatever, no, no fee. And then there's the thirty-day termination of convenience.
Correct, which we get hit with.
Well, I've noted your your change there, and I've also noted which we can strike, right? Assuming Flock will have to send that, you know, red line back to them on that and the automatic renewal.
I guess I just don't, I'm still not comfortable with the sixty-day trial of twenty units. We can get rid of eighteen, keep two, and our bill goes down, in theory. I don't see that in the contract.
We can certainly move to table the action tonight. I can, we can prepare a memo that would address those particular questions and perhaps a proposed red line, if that's the council's desire.
Ed, you're about to say something?
Well, I have a different comment outside of the agreement itself. And it's probably not one that you can necessarily assuage me with. But this is a tough, tough one for me. I'm all about putting the bad guys away, right? And solving these property crimes. I'm a hundred percent behind that. The civil libertarian in me also has some concerns over this. The fact that we're we're taking photos of every innocent driver on the street as well just gives me pause.
If it helps at all, our current intersection cameras run for thirty days at a or hold data for thirty days a time. We're currently with our our traffic control cameras. We're, we've got several intersections that we're filming all the time. The only difference is they're not in a position where they can, they can map a car or read a license plate, but they're.
Individual driver that's on the street. That's more of a a broad-based picture of the intersection so that we can do the police reports and what have you at accidents. And for whatever reasons you guys use that, this is taking every individual driver on the roadway. I I just have some, just some basic philosophical concerns with that. I mean, you can definitely provide us with success stories, and I don't doubt those for a second. I'm I'm sure there's dozens, if not hundreds, more of those types of stories. But I'm sure there are also some mistaken identity issues that happen that I'm sure, you know, Flock's not going to advertise to us, but I'm sure it happens as well.
The one thing I I might say about that, although it's taking a picture of of every innocent rear license plate that's going by, it's not connecting that with any personal data. It's just taking a photo, and only if that plate is on that hot list, somebody who's wanted or somebody who who is driving a stolen car, those we get alerted to.
But again, you could have mistakes made. No, no system's a hundred percent, right? And the idea that we're sharing data across municipalities, again, that can be a very good thing. It could also, you could flip that on its head, too, right? If you're looking at it from from a different perspective, so.
And our our policy does specifically say that a a hit on a flock camera is not probable cause to make a stop. We have to go do the traditional method of running that plate, calling it in dispatch, running it on our mobile data computer. So it alerts us to a possible stolen car or wanted person. But it's on our officers to take that next step and confirm that before we take any enforcement action on that.
And, yeah, I mean, I think I expressed these reservations, at least maybe a little bit more minimally at strategic planning of the same concerns about about some of these cameras. But, but, yeah, so whether we table it or not, I I'm I'm not I I'm fine with tabling it if that's what we we need to do from a contractual standpoint. You know, I'm, I don't know, I I again, I'm, this is a tough one for me. I'm kind of torn on it. You know, am I willing to, you know, see the pilot move forward? Yeah, I I again, I see the value for you. There's no doubt. But I just philosophically have some concerns with it.
Eric or TreeCon, are you having more questions? Or would you be supportive of tabling?
Yeah, I I have, I have a question. From an operational or service perspective, what's the responsibility of Flock on if if a camera goes down? Or say we had a hailstorm or or, you know, and and the the solar capability was was destroyed? And how quickly would service be guaranteed to be provided to that?
Yes, so it's our our responsibility to take care of the devices, right? That's part of the leasing model. And as we grow, we are expanding and hiring more technicians. So we've got technicians in your region, in your area, who would be responsible for maintaining those devices.
So where specifically are is that technician, Des Moines?
Um, I can pull up our our recent hiring structure. At this, at this time, I know that we have a a pretty quick turnaround. So let me follow up on the specifics. Give me about five minutes to figure that out.
Yeah, that's fine. And I appreciate that. But also, I'm wondering, you know, from a contractual point of view, is there a certain time that you that you need, that 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 you have to to get that fixed? Or is is a day, is it a week? I guess I'm I'm also concerned with that.
I I was going to echo Eric, that comment you just made. I didn't see an SLA in there. And, you know, I I'll I'll also echo Ted's comments as well, as far as, you know, I I see the value, but I also have concerns. I I do have some specific questions, I guess, for the contract for Christina, maybe. So I'd be, I'd be open to tabling this until we could.
Is that a motion? So moved. Is there, so Srikanth, that was a motion on your part?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a second from Councilmember McCoy.
Yes.
Oh.
I was just gonna say, our our service level agreement is 48 hours. Just I I don't know if that was highlighted in the contract version you guys have. It's not.
Another thing to add to the list. Sounds like there, so we have a motion on the table to table for discussion.
I'd just like to make a comment that having been a victim of a property crime, I'm very supportive of this. And I think the safety features that can be added to a community are pretty substantial, as you have described. I think it means a lot to hear the success that Urbendale, for example, sees that they have had. So I'm disappointed to be tabling it, but I think we, let's not table it for long.
I I would echo that. I am supportive of this, but I'm not sure how we can be disappointed in tabling something that is contractually flawed. And that's our job is to make sure a contract is solid prior to me signing. I will not approve a contract that is still open ended. That's a responsible thing to do, not a, not a disappointing.
Take two weeks.
Not a disappointing, not a, I'm sorry, I'm not a disappointing thing. And so that's why I table it.
Well, we've got a motion on the table to table. And are we ready for?
And you have a second and we are ready for a vote unless there's more discussion here on it. You have a motion and a second.
So if you, is the equipment ready? Would the council please vote to on whether or not to table this matter to the next meeting? And will clerk post the vote once it's available and it passes by a vote of four to one to table. So we'll take this up at our next. Srikanth, you can send your comments to legal counsel and she's made notes of what's been raised tonight.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Laura.
So there. Quickly. All right. Very good. Next item we have, Jeff, you're talking about speed regulations.
Yes, back in June, staff made a presentation to council on the Northwest 142 corridor. Following that presentation and discussion, two proposals were made. One was to reduce the speed limit on Northwest 142 to 35 miles an hour to match the other north-south corridors. The other was to install a rapid rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the trail crossing on 142. We've moved forward with the installation of the foundations for those RRFBs. We are currently waiting on delivery of them at this time. We've also set out trail cameras and counts, getting counts. They've been out for several weeks. We'll have those counts before. We'll take some counts afterwards, get that data to you and follow up probably during the summer too, I think would be the higher usage time for us to get a lot data on what the usage is, is we get later in the spring and summer next year. So we've coordinated with Waki. Waki is in the process of making the changes to change the speed limit on their side. So what you have before you tonight are a few pages, a lot of words to move 16 characters, including periods and spaces from one section to another. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions for Jeff? If not, we're looking for the first reading.
I'll move that ordinance number 1126. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Is there a second from someone? Second. Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
That is private.
She didn't know you knew how to read.
Discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And when the clerk please post the vote on the first readings of the ordinance. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Matt, water irrigation. For Liz.
I think we don't have a big topic after two hours.
Yeah. Yes.
There we go. All right. What we have for you tonight is just really igniting the policy discussion on this. Of course, the council has prioritized reviewing our water irrigation rate structure, part of your strategic planning efforts. And what we wanted to do tonight is really introduce and start with some policy statements we've outlined and Liz will go through them briefly. Once we go through the policy discussion, just some examples or sample kind of structures that could be put in place. Examples from other communities and then even an example that we had formerly in this community back prior to 2014. And so, but what we really wanted to start with on this policy, on water irrigations is really start talking about policy goals. So what was included in the packet was really, okay, where, what what are the reasons that the council wants to do this? Well, what the staff would offer, at least for your consideration, to think about is these four kind of main items and then any items that you would add or or adjustments to these, these four items, really about environmental stewardship first and foremost. Of course, we're, I have had a lot of discussions over the last couple of years about drought conditions. Source waters, that's been a conversation particularly from with our supplier, Des Moines Water Works, who provides our wholesale water and to a point where last year we had voluntary reductions in terms of water usage because of the drought condition. So really that lead item, that lead step forward in terms of a policy is environmental stewardship as a goal. With that, kind of coupled with that is also financial stewardship. So there is a a cost to having peaking in terms of a water system, both a kind of a cost to your infrastructure, which kind of is handled by the next goal. But also as we are continuing having conversations, whether it's the Central Iowa Water Works proposal that is continuing to be worked on, or even us staying with Des Moines Water Works, there's continual conversation about having surcharges for communities that are peaking communities typically driven by irrigation. So for example, Clive, when we're at a kind of a drought condition, we can peak almost as much as four to one or definitely easily three to one to our normal usage. So that is one of the higher peaking communities in the metro area that Des Moines Water Works supplies. And so they have been having a lot of conversations about what kind of stress that causes on infrastructure and being able to provide water in those situations. So there's a financial consideration to be had in terms of a policy goal of how do we reduce potential surcharges or costs in the future with a a water irrigation structure, rate structure? And then the infrastructure stewardship. So I I think it behooves us as a community to try to find ways through water conservation measures and water irrigation rate structures can be a component of that to try to avoid having to construct or build more gray infrastructure, whether it's water storage or further piping to manage our peak water usage. So some communities have constructed ASR facilities, aquifer storage and recovery facilities. I can tell you right now, the costs of those are pretty substantial. So if we can avoid those costs, just ask Ankity right now, who's also who's building an ASR in terms of the cost of those facilities. If we can avoid those costs, there's again, it kind of ties to the financial stewardship element, but also helps us reduce our long-term infrastructure maintenance. And then finally, customer equity is those that are using the water, paying a sufficient amount to cover those costs. So it's really looking about that equity component between the customers. We have a varying rate, for example, between residential and commercial customers now. Commercial customers pay a little more, a little over a dollar more per 1,000 gallons on their irrigation meter. Theoretically, those commercial customers can pass those costs along, whereas a residential customer doesn't have as much flexibility to do so. So that's something in terms of consideration of as we look at different rate structures, is customer equity an important goal that we want to maintain? So I know I ran through those pretty quickly, but that's really where I wanted to start the conversation, get a sense of where the council's at in terms of priority. Are these policy goals speaking to what you're wanting to see? As we evaluate our irrigation rate structures and there's things that we're missing, adjustments, deletions, kind of wanted to just open it up there before we jump into the structures, just to provide you examples. Or we could do that and and do the policy goal at the end. Discussion at the end, it's completely up to the council.
Let's proceed.
So just as some, some examples, I'll turn it over to Liz to talk a little bit about our history and then some examples that she's researched.
Thanks, man. Mayor and council. So if the city were to go to a tiered structure, it has done this before, prior to 2014. And at that time, you can see what the rates were in 2014. And of course, there is what the current rates are. So in 2014, the city elected to eliminate the tiered rate structure due to the concerns that your neighboring communities were not utilizing that structure at that time. I don't have control up here. Okay, so the this option, actually, it's the one right before Matt. Yeah. So the first one listed in in your memo is a simple and equitable option, which is to eliminate the summer, to implement, excuse me, a summer surcharge. The city of Norwalk recently added a peak summer surcharge to the customers. They have, and that is to their secondary water meter. They charge $2 for every 1,000 gallons in addition to their monthly usage charge. And so the the chart there shows you our current rates. And then it also illustrates then what are both residential and commercial rate would be if we added the $2. And then that final column on the far right side is the difference between what it is current and what it would produce on somebody's bill. So it's this, this chart here shows shows what a bill would look like.
Would that, would that apply to only the second meter or or does it apply to both?
That would just be the second meter.
Just the irrigation meter. All of these would be just the irrigation meter.
Okay, this might be a little difficult to see, but you're, like I said, you're.
In the packet.
Yeah, your packet has some information here. So staff provided several options for the residential irrigation customers in the memo. The support, the supporting materials considered the highest irrigation month of August 2021 for all of these scenarios. If you're able to study the the summary that was provided by PFM and also the residential for both the customer and, excuse me, the residential and commercial. The data shows for residential that 30% of the customers fall within, you can kind of see it on the chart up there, 30% in the first tier. And then 10% falls in the highest tier. With the information staff provided, several options in that top chart is for those current rates. The top chart is for the current rates and then the three options below, which I'll get into here. One thing that you need to consider is that staff did some really quick math on embracing the average or normal residential irrigation users. And we did that by calculating the average lot size multiplied by how much water per week would be able to support turf grass. And we concluded that roughly 7,500 gallons of water per month is for the average household. That kind of tells you why we are offering or giving you options of the tiered rate at 7,500 as that, as that first tier. So option one, if you're following, we have, we maintain the base rate at 0 to 15,000 gallons. And then we increase it at 15% for the next tier and 50% for the following tier. And then you can see from the chart there the, what the fee would be and then the difference from what they're currently getting paid, they're currently paying and what their increase would be. That's option one. And then option two is looking at increasing the base at 10%. And then that second tier of 15,000 to 30,000 gallons would be 30%. And then that last year is at 70%. And with that, again, on the very last is what that would increase for a bill. Now, in your documentation, the summary, it also gives you the number of the whole amount of of what the monthly increase would be for all of the the customers. Option three is to maintain the base rate at the 0 to 75,000. And then it goes up from there, 10%, 15% and 50. And then that total amount would be 43,000 roughly for the year. So again, these are all just three options under residential rate increases.
And the, you, some rough science, right, that we we estimated that around that 7,500 gallons for the average user for a average residential home. Again, rough science, we wanted to try to bring a little bit of that of thinking about the tiers of what are we trying to incentivize? Or or not, or disincentivize? And so you can see again, a lot of options here. Don't it, don't have a specific recommendation for you, but we're just trying to give you some examples of how what these tier structures could look like for residential.
So commercial on the next slide looks a little, just a little bit different because of course the users are 7,500 gallons. It's more upwards of 100,000 gallons. So increasing that base for option one. So again, looking at the current rates there. Option one being 20% for 0 to 100,000 gallons and then going up again 20 and 20 for that first option. Option two is 20% and then 50 and 50. So it kind of hits a little bit harder for those higher users. And then option three is 20, 20 and 70%. And then, of course, the increase in revenues for each month, month would be somewhere between 32,000 and 65,000. So those are your options for something real simple and then something a little more complex for residential and commercial.
Commercial gets a little more difficult because you can have a pretty wide variety, you know, some commercial properties can be pretty substantial. And they may be exercising good practices, but they just have a lot of ground to cover. So this one, it gets a little harder with commercial than you have a typical, more of a typical size for residential lots. So that one where it gets a little bit more, can get a little bit more challenging in these tiers because you could have somebody who is a high user, but they might have a large parcel. Now, we don't have substantial parcels in Clive, like large campuses, like maybe a college campus or something like that, that might have a lot of irrigation. But we have some pretty substantial, particularly medical facilities, office facilities that would have, you know, some pretty high usage, so.
Did you not segment it even more then by just by lot size? So you'd set up different lot size for different tier rates?
You could potentially do that. That's something that we could consider on the commercial side that I haven't seen examples of that, but that's something we could research.
Sense on the commercial side.
The option, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
You're good.
So the option that Norwalk put in place, i- is that from from a financial stewardship position, is that kind of in line with some of the other numbers that were being discussed with the the tiered options or is it different? Like substantially different, I mean, from from that 32 to 65 number that you were talking about before?
From a, from a revenue option or in terms of what revenue it generates?
Right, from, yeah, just making sure that that, you know, we're doing, you know, we're doing the right thing for the city from a financial standpoint.
And I think we have those estimates in the memo, right?
Yeah, actually, yes, in the attachments and.
Yeah, I think it was, what was the estimate per month for the?
For, and again, this is only for then two months. They're doing the $2 for just July and August.
Is this a summer surcharge, is what they call it?
Yeah.
In Norwalk, but it is. And the philosophy behind that is, is those are your two months that you're most concerned about peak usage in terms of less water availability, highest water demand, highest stress on the infrastructure. So it's basically incentivizing folks to consider if you're going to irrigate or if you have a brand new house and you're going to be laying sod down, don't do it in July and August when we're having the highest stress on the system. So there is, I mean, there's definitely some method of madness too of doing a summer surcharge. And I think that's why Norwalk's implemented it. But I think we've.
I do have those numbers, yes.
Right.
So for Srikanth, it's $60,000 difference from the base to the peak month for residential. That would be the total amount for all users. And then for commercial, it'd be roughly 30,000.
And that's per month.
And that's per month.
Revenue per month. So it would be.
So 90,000.
Similar, but probably a little bit less than the the bigger tiered systems.
Sure, like two or three, for example.
Right. And that's a question too. Again, I didn't put it in one of the policy goals yet because I wanted to have the policy discussion of the reason we're doing this first. Is if you do, if you are generating additional revenue as a part of a disincentive for better water conservation, what is the city going to do with those resources? I think will be something that at least I know there was some concern, we don't want to necessarily earmark it, but I think it's going to be important But I think it's going to be important for us to be able to communicate to the public, what are you using these additional resources for? Is it for, again, under that financial stewardship goal, more water conservation practices, funding programs like the SQR going forward, tree planting, things like that? That I I would offer to you would be an easier, a more palatable, but you know. Policy proposition, if you're also communicating, yeah, we're not just, you know, grabbing resources here, we're reinvesting them back into the community as well. And then hopefully saving costs down the line. Again, in infrastructure and hopefully surcharges as a regional supplier, you know, of water.
One other option there would be a future consideration for turf replacement. It doesn't require so many water inputs, which would be another way to decrease the total amount being going toward irrigation and prioritizing human needs. And other economic development growth in the future.
Well, jump back to the the policy goals now that you've seen again, a couple of examples of what those structures could look like. And and so really, your honor, all I'm, you know, basically looking for, we're looking for today, and we have some questions at the end is really. Are there things that you think we're missing that we need to research more? How do these policy goals feel to you? Are there things again, things that we're missing? Or is this generally capturing what the council would like to see? And then with that direction, we would come back with. An actual recommendation for you on a rate structure later this year.
Further further thoughts, Michael?
I I like these policy goals. If I were to change anything, I'd just flip three to two, you know, and. If it was kind of in a in an order, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's not really in a ranked order, other than I think one is should be the first environmental stewardship should be the lead. I don't think the other three are any in any particular order.
Yeah, I think.
But I think showing prioritization of that is important.
I'll get right on here.
Other thoughts or comments?
So just to go back to Shrikanth's question before. For this this residential. All of these gallons, the zero to seventy five hundred gallons, that's specific to the second meter only, right?
It's not the house. Just the irrigation meter, all of this. So the the two dollar surcharge, even on the other model, would just be on the irrigation meter. Now, I don't know if Norwalk has separate meters for everything. I believe they do, but yeah, it would just be on the irrigation meter. So you'd be setting the normal water rate for the normal meter. And then on that example, in July and August, our billing system would just put a two dollar surcharge on any irrigation usage. For again, as an example for July and August.
And that's where you get that basic, the the logic of prioritization for some human needs, bathing, cooking, so forth. This being more important than other turf watering needs. And that's why if you want to turf water, that's fine, but we believe that the cost of doing that is greater. And it should not be the same as the basic human needs.
And if I looked at, I'm just doing this off the top of my head, but just seeing like when we had the drought conditions and thinking about the days. Where we had our highest pumpages in our history, those were the only days that those were in were in July and August. We might have had end of July. A few times last year, but definitely August last year. Have been our highest pumpages where we were over four million gallons, which is the highest we've had in a single day.
And I believe the high four that Des Moines Water Works has had have all hit in the last two years.
And they've been in August typically in terms of months of the year. July or August.
To Shrikanth's point, a couple of weeks ago, though, I could see some of that funding being earmarked for things like that wifi. I like that idea, that wifi, you know, do you do a rebate, a fifty dollar rebate if households buy out of these funds, right? The wifi meter that you were talking about, it picks up if it rained, you know, or if it's going to rain or stuff like that, right? Charge them a higher, but incentivize them with something.
Yeah, creating a rebate program or something that other communities have done to incentivize that that kind of you don't need to water if it's already raining sort of thing.
Yeah.
Right. And I think you could do that residentially and commercially.
Oh, sure.
Other thoughts or questions? Do you want input on the rate structure or?
If there is something that specifically you're you're leaning towards or like what you're seeing or don't like what you're seeing, of course, I'm happy to take those reactions right now.
I mean, when I read through it, my preference for the residential was option three. It was more of a graduated, you know, option. And then if you get over thirty thousand, well, then you're really being hit. And I can't imagine there's that many people that do that. But so it's it's kind of a nice kind of level graduated increase, but then once you get to a certain point, there's a pretty good premium placed on that. So that was when I looked through the options, that's that was my preference.
Ten percent of the residential customers are in that last year.
Yeah, was that right?
Yeah.
Okay, wow.
But again, that would be the argument, are you disincent, you want to disincentivize that ten percent to move down into a different tier?
Yeah.
So one thing I thought about it is if we do the soil quality restoration project again. Can we say we're going to do that in months that aren't the peak months that?
Soil quality restoration would not be appropriate to do in July and the heart of August. We would need to mobilize in late August so we could take advantage of what historically is great timing in September. The number of households that we can do SQR on in the future is going to be dependent on some other considerations. We need to have a contractor who's willing to do it. We need to have material that the contractor can get. And we need to maintain this, it's this motivation in the community to keep doing it. But at least in this first year, we've got a strong signal that a lot of residents are very interested in this, especially because they think it can help them in the future. Decrease the costs of their inputs to keep great turf.
I just think we need to be aware that people would probably have the preference to miss the more expensive month. So there will be requests to not be in August.
Yeah, good point, good point.
Kind of kind of building. Sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, building off what Susan was just saying. So the other option, like the option two and option three, kind of the more tiered structures. Are those also only for July and August? Or is that more of a seasonal thing?
So so that's a good question. So how we built it, at least when we asked PFM to just build it from a revenue standpoint, they just used our existing data for all months. So what we used as an example was the the highest month that we've ever experienced was August twenty twenty one. So that's a question, you could have it twelve months for the year, or you could have it just for certain months of the year. Similar to what Norwalk has done with just a flat two dollar surcharge, you could have a tiered rate structure just for certain times of the year. I believe our billing system is capable of doing that.
Likelihood of it being used outside of a few months is pretty low, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, people are going to use it, but I I would imagine you're not using it as significantly or as you're going to in the months of July and August. Obviously, if you were getting SQR done, you were using it in September. But that and that is a good point, though, Councilmember Judkins, is if we are, for example, if we're going to use. Some of the revenue from this program to fund the SQR program as an annual program. It probably wouldn't make sense to have that. Maybe a punitive rate structure on the months when you're asking people to water a lot to maximize your SQR. So I think that's a good call out of something we might want to think about in this whole consideration.
Thanks for saving the communications guy.
Well, and and I'm also thinking of of other scenarios, like if you have a field pipe burst in the irrigation system in the in, you know, November, December or something, you know. Do we really want to penalize somebody for that?
And I think you go back to the foundational piece of the goals, right? Environmental stewardship, what's the problem? We have the the least amount of source water, at least here recently, and that's been in those months. When the voluntary reductions have been implemented. So and then your infrastructure stress is going to be during those months, July and August, you maybe argue if June is in there or not. So it 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 can get you around to those summer months, and then you're encouraging folks when you don't have that stress. And again, they're building a new house and they're going to be laying sod. You're disincentivizing that to happen in July and August, but if they do do it. They're going to pay for it.
A lot of these practices too are appropriate to do in the April, May timeframe as well, early June. So we've got to bookends on those hot water at the month. I don't want us to get thinking just that September is our only golden opportunity to implement some of these things.
We sell most of the compost in April, May, right? The bulk of compost leaves in April, May. Slows down in September, October. Still a lot. I'd be in favor of twelve months, right? Just put it in twelve months. You build the same, nobody's going to use it in January, nobody's going to use it in February, you're not going to hit those, so why piece it out? Put it in, if you're hitting thirty thousand in April. It's the same problem as hitting thirty thousand in July. And so I would be for a twelve month cycle on it.
Yeah, I I agree. I think that it's to have a uniform policy on that and not, you know, pick and choose certain months. I think we're better off having a consistency with a twelve month cycle as well.
The lending support to that could be climate change since we can't predict what.
You could have a spring that's randomly.
Yeah.
Dry to where you're having stress on your system. I mean, we did have a September. This was twenty twenty where in September we were faced with some source water issues. And we actually had came real close to Des Moines Water Works doing voluntary reductions in September twenty twenty. And that was actually the middle part of September, if I recall.
Chaos will happen anytime.
Since apparently in twenty fourteen, we changed things because of what neighboring communities were doing. Are there any others that are doing the tearing on a year round basis?
And Ames has a very robust program, but it was very difficult to get in these in this presentation.
Yeah, not in the metro area than we've seen with Norwalk, we would be leading on this item. And one thing I would offer too is if if you're looking at going the twelve month tiered route is we do have an unknown hanging out there. With Central Iowa Water Works, and if there's a potential surcharge, I would say you'd want to start your. Or we would want to start our tiered rate structure at a level where we're comfortable with knowing that we might need to make some adjustments to it. Not knowing, okay, is the surcharge above a certain peaking level? And you're really now trying to hit that target as part of that financial stewardship goal. You may want to start lower, and if you have to work your way up, then it's a part of, you know. That Central Iowa Water Works, that regional goal.
Yeah, right, right now.
With a discussion with the community too on that as well.
Right now, I'm leaning towards if if we go that twelve month route that we keep it kind of simple on the on the fee structure and and kind of do. Maybe what Norwalk did, but maybe you say we're going to, we're going to run that year round rather than July, August, or yeah.
Not even calling it a surcharge, just.
Right, right.
Yeah, just just call it, yeah, that's something that's definitely you could make a very simple rate. But then again, I was like, okay, are you disincentivizing the higher users because you're paying the higher users that?
And I do, I do, yeah, that's, and I I do agree that I I would like to disincentivize that ten percent that's in that tier four, but. I'm I'm just, I'm trying to balance that with how 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 much complexity are we adding all at once?
And maybe it's just two tiers, for example, and whatever that upper tier will call it, whatever level you you folks want to see. And it's a, it's just two different tiers.
Sure, yeah, that would help.
Other comments, Pete?
Just a reminder on the communications front. When they're strategically planning, we talked about bringing this after the budget process has proven the worth or not of this idea. Assuming it is moving forward, the storytelling and sharing this information with the community would be in the March, April, May timeframe. Leading up to when new rates would be implemented, starting in May of twenty twenty three. With the stormwater rate, the current plan, though we will be revisiting that here in future meetings still in this year. Is designed, stormwater rate is designed to be a tiered rate as well. So tiered rate stormwater, tiered rate irrigation, there would be similarities in the way that we might tell those stories. If we didn't use tiers in one, but did use tiers in the others, that would be something we could communicate, it would just be some hurdle to get over.
Good point.
And they, and then those two are coupled together, right? This is about a broader water resources story of the stormwater component, you know, tiered, it's a usage based, you know, small, medium, large lots, impervious surface. Coupled with water irrigation rate structure, which could be generating revenue to gain further water resources. Programs and initiatives like SQR, tree planting, whatever it may be. That might be a a story we can tell together. That whole lot of resources story at one time.
Well.
Sorry, your honor. The amount of revenue that we're talking about generating, we would not immediately have the bandwidth to run that through cost share programs, tree sale or other things potentially. Ramp in those up and learning takes time. It could be also that we prove after that first year that we've got a lot of additional revenue. And so thinking about the sort of purpose statement that goes along with these changes. That why these dollars are important and how they will be responsibly used will be a big part of our communication task. So as to consider the policy naming some of those most likely uses, at least as we understand them to now, not blocking out opportunities in the future. Will be a really important part of what we craft for our story.
I think it's okay, and we don't need to apologize for offsetting some of our current costs, right? Not only are we going to bring on new programs, it's okay to say. We're 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 being financial, good financial stewards by offsetting some of our current costs on our budget today. And we're going to do these additional things is our plan, right?
That's right, yeah.
That's a good story.
Yep, that's a very positive story.
Well, back to Ted, Ted had suggested on the residential that he liked the graduated tiers. Because, you know, the more you use, the more you pay. I think that's.
I get a sense of the tier, a tiered structure. The commercial one's a little harder.
Yeah.
We're going to have to get creative with that, but that may be one where. Keeping it simpler on the tiers on both residential, commercial might be the easier fix there.
I really don't think on commercial, you're going to see any pushback. I mean, these are nominal changes that is just going to be. On the commercial side brought in and shared or absorbed. And so I'm.
Seventy percent rate increase up the base might be a little high. They wait notice that.
Let's bring it down from a hundred thousand gallons, two hundred fifty thousand gallons, right?
Okay, if you have a.
The feedback you need.
I do, your honor.
All right. Our next item is potential litigation or Iowa Code, chapter twenty one dot five one C. And so we would need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to that code.
Go move. Second.
So a motion and a second to go into closed session pursuant to the Iowa Code chapter stated in the agenda. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote on going into closed session?
I mean, yes, mine timed out.
And would clerk please post the vote once it's available? So we have a vote of five to zero to go into closed session, so we'll rely on.
Yeah, I got you. Leave it, Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Micklin, can we do a sound check, please?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, everybody just return, Your Honor. Motion to come back into session.
Second.
Motion, a second, to come have a closed session. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And would please post vote once it's available.
So I'm a yes. I'm having issues with the computer at times, though.
I'm at it too, because I clicked it once and then it just disappeared.
So you're a yes. Yes. All right, so we've got a vote of five to zero. Come out of closed session. Let the record reflect that no action was taken during the closed session. Resuming our agenda, we have our reports. Pete, what have you got?
Your Honor, earlier tonight, we had information from our supervisor, Supervisor Brownell, about Rapid SOS and the Alert Iowa systems that are coming on board. That's going to be a really important story for us to share. We are going to be trained on that at a staff level starting next week. It's critical that we are confident that we can use the tool the same, the same way, if not better than we use Code Red, specifically when we're talking about alerting folks who are in harm's way when floodwaters come. So we're looking forward to that training, but expect a heavy emphasis on that in our storytelling. We're also optimistic that it might meet some of our other type of texting needs, like weather ordinance, street closures, things like that as well. So more to come, but we're optimistic about what this new tool will mean for Clive.
Is Code Red chief what you've used for missing people, kids and that type of thing? So it will cover that?
Yeah. Yeah. On November 10th, our only council meeting in November, immediately the week following our work session, that is, the week before that, I have been able to, works for council, line up a photographer, Chris Mahary, to come an hour before the council meeting would start to take individual updated headshot photos for all of you, and then our group photo that we can use to put up on the wall and use another storytelling that we do. But I need confirmation from folks that they'll be able to join us for that hour before the meeting and plan the, before the meeting on November 10th. Yep, so it'd be sometime between five and six, and we can get the group photo when you're all are here. But I'll work with Chris to find a nice spot, probably in the library in front of the fireplace where we could do some of the other photos, or if we don't want to, if we don't want to do them in front of the flats.
I'll be here.
Clean yourself up, Weaver.
Yeah, I'll take a shower. So I'm seeing yeses around the table here from the four that are here, and just need to know from Councilman Micklin and Councilman Klein.
Yeah, I think that data work.
Great.
Yeah, that that'll work for me as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll confirm.
And I'll put a reminder in my weekly update on that, just to keep, I'll keep it in there consistently between now and then.
Much appreciated. Last, happy to report that at the end of this week, we're on schedule to have all the residential soil quality restorations done, and that will leave us then for next week to finish out the contract. We have a few more dollars that to put toward practices. We've decided to do about 43,000 square feet down at George Lundberg Park, which will help us as we jump into our next project, which is telling the story about our cost partnership with neighbors in the Harbach neighborhood. So this is a wonderful transition, and I look forward, when we get to November, to doing a big roundup as part of our larger Clive Water story presentation about the very successful 2022 cost share program.
Very good, Pete. I'm wondering if you could just send a calendar invite for that photo session?
Yes, sir.
Make sure it pops on everybody's calendar. All right, that's it. Srikanth.
Just a quick note, I'm looking forward to taking part in the, my first DART financial and strategic planning session next week. Working through some calendar issues, but should be able to make that, looking forward to that. But other than that, no report.
I'm fun with that. Ted. All right, I've got a couple of things. I'll try to be quick. MPO exec met yesterday. A new proposal was brought forth by our executive director to do one, another one of these roles where the MPO kind of plays the middleman administrative function for the Central Iowa Housing Authority, which is an outside housing authority, different counties, like Story County, for example. This triggered a lot of really spirited debate about the role of the MPO and the expansion of its, its mission. And so I don't know where that specifically is going to go with the Central Iowa Housing Authority. I have a feeling it may fail. Because MPO is not a housing, you know, organization in any way. But it did trigger a lot of discussion about the role of the MPO in the metro, and so we'll be looking at a new strategic planning effort there that I will probably be involved with in trying to reset the expectations and the mission for the MPO here in the near future. So anyways, look for that in the next few months to kick off. Oh, the model bicycle ordinance actually did not pass. Again, a lot of spirited discussion. The primary concern with that at the MPO, what was really twofold, one, the idea that without a uniform adoption across the metro, that you would have this patchwork of bicycle ordinances that would not make sense for the end user and would be more confusing, and that a belief by a number on the exec that there was more of a legislative role to make it more uniform across the state. And so I don't know what will happen at the MAC, but at the MPO, at least at exec, it was, it was not passed. So anyways, that's MPO. Icon, two things there. Maggie McClellan, our executive director, has put in her notice to resign. She's going to be, they didn't announce exactly what she's going to be doing, but doing something that apparently is labeling a personal passion. So she's, but she's given plenty of notice. She's been really instrumental in getting the, the icon off the ground, and so that, that is a big loss. But she's given an end date of November 11th to have a little bit of time to try to find her replacement. Hannah Enman will be the, the interim from the Greater Outdoors Foundation, and so she'll, she'll be fine until we can find a replacement for that. So that is a bit of a setback for that group. The, the key date to know for Icon is the letting date of November 1st for the, the contract for the Scott Avenue dam mitigation, which is the big one that we've got to get with the build grant. And, and my understanding is there does seem to be more interest from the contractor community because we split those up, if you remember, into three different projects instead of just one big massive project. And so there's optimism that we're going to have more options and hopefully some better bids. But that date is November 1st, and so that's really, that's kind of a crossroads date for Icon. We'll see if, if, if that doesn't come in good, there could be some future challenges. So that's it.
Thanks, Ted. Eric.
Yeah, a couple of things. Susan and I attended the ribbon cutting grand opening of the Vibe at 8035, and very impressive of what Jason, Tina have done to renovate the old Sterling Inn, so really a great addition to the portfolio of, of our commercial business community right there. I think it's really going to be a, a solid place. Also attended Green Belt and the Landing Luncheon, well, that which was well-attended in addition to the Fies Latina over at the Harbach Center, another very nice evening. Great mariachi music, very diverse crowd, and in another solid event for the community.
Thank you, Eric. Just a couple of quick things here. Again, wanted to thank the chief for joining me at my log, the Metro Mayor's meeting last night for the mental health and criminal justice presentation. Again, I learned a lot and was glad to, to be there. At our MAC meeting, we focused on the upcoming legislative session, and there will be such a high turnover. There will be a great need for us to educate the new legislators. And that was probably the, the key takeaway. They just won't have the back history and understand city issues. So it'll be incumbent on us to do what we can to educate the new ones. Susan.
Well, I am so excited that we had our first kickoff for the Clive Economic Vitality Committee. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in here with us, and it really, really is a great group. So it's great to have the mayor and Srikanth there. So I'm glad you heard some good things. I, I think there's more really good to come. And I think you've all seen the notice about the announcement that we will have the Bravo Gala the first Saturday in February. Tickets are supposed to go on sale pretty soon. And we just related to that, had a meeting of the Finance and Sustainability Committee, which I'm on today. And they're trying to get those of us who are part of that, who most people on there have a pretty good handle on finance, a little bit more involved in the grant making and just analyzing what the financial status is of some of the recipients, just to kind of keep track of how they're doing. And it's really interesting, coming through the pandemic time, we look at a three-year span of what's been happening there, but I've suggested that we shouldn't just limit it to three years. We should hold on to where they were pre-pandemic and kind of watch it maybe up to five years to really get a handle on how trends look. So very interesting.
Michael.
On my committee's nothing, but the mayor's asked me to, to just talk briefly about Metro Waste Authority and a couple of items that happened there. They just got back several from a conference in Iowa. They won the Best Infrastructure Award for the recycling facility as best, as well as the most innovative from the, one from the Recycling Association, one from the Solid Waste Association. They also just won the award for Best Infrastructure from a National Recycling Association, and then will be. On my committee is nothing, but the mayor has asked me to, to now just talk briefly about Metro Waste Authority and a couple of items that happened there. They just got back several from a conference in Iowa. They won the best infrastructure award for the recycling facility as best, as well as the most innovative from the, one from the Recycling Association, one from the Solid Waste Association. They also just won the award for best infrastructure from a national recycling association, and then we'll be speaking next week at the largest MRF operators forum to discuss the innovations of their facility. So being seen nationally certainly, and soon to come internationally, we're.
Matthew. Just a couple of items tonight. Just wanted to thank those of you that were able to attend. On Monday, we had our Green Belt Landing event, fundraising event at the Palms, very generous that Russ Van Norddale allowed us to use that facility. Again, had us the brief program and then a lot of discussions in the kind of restaurant area afterwards with a number of prospective donors, both corporately and, and family based. So hoping to have some nice leads that come out of that. I know we have a few that did pop up that evening that I'm excited to follow up on. So that was a really, really nice event with the Clive Community Foundation folks and their board, well, very well put together, and shout out to Richard too, and Tiffany in particular on his team, who put together a lot of materials for that event and digitally and invitations and stickers and just a whole lot of fun things that happened with that. Also just wanted to remind the council too, is next Wednesday night, we'll be having a neighborhood meeting out in the Shadow Creek area, discussing concepts for Sixtina Park now coming together now that finally the developer is starting to turn things over to us, to the city for that construction. What I'm hoping to do then is the next council meeting is have Richard kind of present what we heard from that meeting and the concepts. I know I've shared with that with you in my weekly update last week, but want to kind of circle back on that and, and talk about what the schedule is for that and kind of where we're, where we're looking at, you know, the opinion of probable cost for that project and what we heard from the neighborhood. We've had a few folks that have been vocal that are adjacent, directly adjacent to the park of where the trails run and how close is it to my property, and I think those are some things we'll have to work through. But he'll show kind of the evolution of, of those design concepts. And lastly, it is something I want to put on the council's radar. We'll talk about it probably more as we get to the CIP work session in November. We were made aware earlier this week that the WRA is now going to be looking at moving their schedule up for the paralleling of the sanitary sewer, the trunk, the main trunk sewer that runs through our community, through the Green Belt or the substantial portions of the Green Belt. We knew that this day was going to come at some point, but with the Grimes connection through Urbandale to the north, the north edge of the Walnut Creek watershed, that is moving up the timetable. And so preliminarily, they are looking at doing actual construction work of that parallel sewer west of the interstate. So they kind of start at the high ground and work their way down as early as 2025. So that doesn't seem like a long ways away, but when you're talking about this kind of project, it is not that long a ways away, and running all the way through the Green Belt down to Seventy-third Street by 2028. So again, just putting it on your radar. It's some things that had some conversations with their executive director earlier this week on, you know, how to, where this came from so quickly and notice, and we thought we had a good conversation on that, but we'll, we'll definitely need to work through that. So this again would just be paralleling the existing sewer's capacity constraint that will have upstream of all of all the communities that serve that trunk sewer, and then eventually making its way down to the sewage treatment plant. But so some, some impacts to come on projects that are impacting our community that aren't necessarily where the lead or control on. So I would put the Hickman interchange as another one in that category that we'll be working through over the next, you know, five years, five to six years, that will have some big impacts to Clive.
Which, but I'll add on that WRA, it's also increased its timeline and redoing that entire facility. They're outgrowing it. They're going to attempt to buy west of them. They're having some new Army Corps levies, higher levies being put in around them as well.
But it would just add to their existing, not moving.
Okay.
Massive.
So it is a massive facility, and so we're looking at more room. So they're looking at moving some of their, some of their operations offsite, but it would most likely go to Metro Waste Authority to take care of some of those issues of composting a lot of their material and freeing up more space for them. So that's coming to, and they're speeding up all these timelines because of a lot of this thing, quantities coming in has exceeded. So I guess it's a good problem, but.
And our, the, the common trunk that we have here on the west side did not, wasn't designed for a community the size of Grimes to be added to it. And so we knew that, again, we knew the parallel sewer, even before the Grimes connection was real, there was a plan to parallel the sewer. We just thought it was more in the twenty thirty-ish timeframe. So that has now changed, but it was going to come at some point. And so now behooves us as a community to see how we can coordinate, how we can take advantage of it, you know, restoration, what happens when, when the work is done, trail considerations. There's a whole lot that will go into this that will be a, be a heavy lift for, for the WRA in terms of this timeline, but also for your staff in terms of trying to figure out how we can best maximize it.
Very good.
I'll have your own.
Anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, we will adjourn at nine fifteen.